Good evening, everyone. It is 7:01, and I will call the July 2 meeting of the Essex Planning Board to order. We are going to record this meeting. 16:23 is here this evening.
Recording in progress.
Before we start the meeting, we do have one clarification to make, and that is about the agenda that was posted. There was a Scrivener's error with the date. The link said July 2. The agenda said June 18, but all the information on the agenda does apply to tonight. We verified this with Town Council as a Scrivener's error and are allowed to proceed with the meeting. And we also spoke to the two applicants who have special permit applications in front of us this evening, and both of them understand and are agreeable to move forward with the continued public hearings on the two projects in front of us.
Sorry.
No. That's not what I meant. So that said, we have no building inspector report, and we are scheduled to reopen the public hearing for the Essex Park Road Open Space Residential Development, the OSRD Special Permit. That was originally opened on May 21st, was continued to our June 4th, and then continued to our June 18 meeting, and continued again to this evening's meeting. So I will take a motion to reopen the hearing.
I move it.
Thank you, Shelley. Microphones.
I move it.
Thank you, Shelley. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ariel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Once again, the fun little statement. "The Planning Board operates under the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48 zoning and Chapter 39, the open meeting law of the Town of Essex bylaws, Chapter 6 zoning. To conduct this hearing, public hearing effectively and fairly, our process tonight will be as follows. First, after these opening remarks and brief review of outstanding issues from Weston and Sampson peer review, the preliminary plan review, and previous meetings, the applicant will be allowed to make an uninterrupted presentation of additional information that has been requested. Second, we will entertain questions, first from the consultant, James Pearson of Weston and Sampson, Essex Town Planner Valerie Massard, both of whom are online with us this evening, and then from members of the Planning Board and members of the department's boards and committees named in Bylaw Section 6-8.6.2, and then from members of the public, in-person first, and then people online. After questions have been addressed, we will hear comments in the same order. As Chair, I will recognize speakers and set time limits if necessary. To ask a question or make a comment, online participants will please enter only your full name and address in the chat, and then wait to be recognized by the Chair. Please do not put your questions or comments directly into the chat, and please keep your microphone on mute throughout the hearing unless you have been recognized to speak. In-person participants will please come to the podium, and when recognized, give their full name and address before asking a question or making a comment. Please speak closely to the microphone; a six inches away is good. We ask that you can find your questions and comments to the project that is the subject of this hearing and to matters that are under the jurisdiction of this board. In addition, we ask that citizens inform themselves of the provisions of the laws under which we operate, particularly the Essex zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw is available online at www.ssexma.org, and hard copies can be provided if requested. Copies of the applicable Mass General Laws may be searched online at malegislature.gov/laws/generallaws. Documents for this project may also be found on the Planning Board page of the Town website in the Essex Park Road OSRD Information section. After comments from the public, Planning Board members will be able to make final comments, and the hearing will then be closed or continue to July 16, 2025. Please note that the public hearing will only be held through 8:00 p.m. this evening, and if questions or comments are not concluded by that time, the hearing will be continued as there is another public hearing scheduled this evening also at 8:00. Although we may disagree on the issues raised, everyone present at this meeting is expected to be civil to all others present, both during the meeting and afterwards while on town property. Those who do not act in a civil manner or engage in rude or disruptive behavior will be asked to leave. Furthermore, this hearing, with the opportunity for public comment, is not the venue to discuss topics outside of the subject matter at hand, which is only the special permit application. As a refresher from our last meeting where we reopened the hearing, please let me reinforce that this is being held regarding only the application for a special permit to allow an OSRD instead of a conventional subdivision. Any property owner has the right to subdivide their land under Mass General Laws, Chapter 41, parts of which are the subdivision control law and the Town of Essex zoning bylaw and rules and regulations relative to subdivision control. The reason for the special permit is to allow the OSRD instead of a conventional subdivision. An OSRD allows smaller lots in exchange for permanently protected open space. The Planning Board completed and approved its preliminary plan review at the June 18 meeting, which included a waiver of the 1,200-foot dead-end limitation, but as a reminder, all decisions and approvals within that review are dependent on applicants receiving the special permit that is the subject of this ongoing hearing. Once the public hearing is concluded, the Planning Board has 90 days to deliberate and issue a decision. Thank you for your continued engagement. That said, we did have some outstanding issues from the peer review at the last meeting, and those involved primarily some of the lots in the conventional subdivision plan. We also asked the applicant for some information regarding drainage basins and leach fields, and they have provided that, and also some information regarding the impervious lot coverage. So I am going to turn the meeting over to the applicant's engineer from Moore &amp; Cameron Group to review these materials. I will put them on the screen, I think, and go from there. So after that, we will open it up to questions again, and then we will, again, take time for comment after that. Will, if you want to go ahead, I will look for the documents we need.
Okay. Good evening. Will Schudter from the Moore &amp; Cameron Group. As Lisa mentioned, we did submit some additional information requested through the peer review process and also from the Board. The first thing that we did submit is the calculations showing the impervious areas per lot and the right-of-way and the overall development for both the conventional subdivision and the OSRD subdivision. The next thing we submitted was just sketch plans, more or less a proof for our yield plan for the four lots that were noted in the peer review. So that was Lot 5, 13, 17, and 18. And we prepared these basically to show that they are constructible from the standpoint of feasibility. And there's, the last thing that we did submit is, I just kind of went through some projects that I've worked on in the past, showing kind of example photos of what drainage basins. Again, we don't know exactly what we're going to be proposing until we get to the engineering, but these are kind of typical infiltration basins, bioretention areas, kind of open surface basins that are vegetated, as well as the leaching facilities. I didn't have the best photos of the leaching facilities, but you'll see it's basically just a lawn, more or less, an open field, a meadow, or something of that nature. The relatively level, 2% slope is kind of what we're shooting for going over the top of these, so it's relatively flat and basically an open area. So some of these photos are kind of during the construction process, so you'll see that there's some exposed soil, but like that top photo, for example, does have the leaching facility that was fully constructed a year ago prior to kind of the house development. This was not an open space. It's actually a friendly 40B for habitat, so there's 10 units, and this is a shared septic system as well. So there's another photo from a different angle kind of showing it, but you can see it behind the house. This is just a single-family house development, kind of showing what a leach field looks like. It's clear, you can usually find them by the vents. There is ways to disguise them or move the vents so they're not kind of in the middle, but this kind of shows you, it just more or less looks like a lawn. This next one is another development. This was a multifamily development over in Raleigh, Mass. Not the best aerial photo, but you can see that it's a very condensed development, a lot of woods around, but the open area on the right side is basically an open lawn area for these houses that don't really have a big backyard. This is another larger development over in Boxford, so this was 66 age-restricted houses. You can see that they're very close-developed, wood surrounding, and again, this was kind of a wooded area that we found and put a septic in, so now it's more or less an open field. This was a little different, but it does have a house and the pump systems, so it does, kind of shows you the size of a system relative to a house there. This photo kind of shows an OSRD that we did over in Georgetown. You can see that the houses are relatively close. There's a lot of woods on the south side. You can't really see it. That was part of the open space, and the leaching field is kind of on the left side of the plan there. Behind the houses, again, open field, you can see it kind of right from the aerial that the area was cleared, and it does have the leaching facility there. And this is a photo from a different angle of the first picture that we took a look at. You can see the vent very faintly in the background, but again, you can see that it was wooded, it was cleared, and now it's going to basically remain as an open field. So this is just examples of what the leaching facility area will look like, and showing that it's kind of a usable area for recreation.
You want the drainage?
Yep. If we could go through the drainage. These are, again, just sample projects that we've, I've done in the past, different types and sizes. So this is an infiltration basin. You can see it's vegetated pretty thoroughly on the sides of it, and then the bottom, because it does get wet consistently, has a smaller grass that was still growing in, but that would basically just be a grass-type bottom on that. The next photo, this is what we call a bioretention area, so it has kind of plantings more in the pond rather than just grass. So this is definitely another option that we're going to be looking at, kind of for what we call a low-impact design. This kind of just shows that these infiltration basins kind of blend into the landscape. You'll see that there's a little putting green over here, but it's basically surrounded by different stormwater features, so these are three infiltration basins surrounding this area, it kind of blends into the landscape. This is just another infiltration basin, very similar. You can see this one was during construction, so it has some not-defined vegetation in it, but you can see kind of the edges are starting to grow in on this one. And this is a photo of the same OSRD that we looked at previously with the septic on the left. It's cut off in this photo, but it shows that there is an infiltration basin, there's rain gardens, and also a detention basin, so there's three different types of BMPs that have been utilized at this project kind of throughout the development to manage the stormwater. And these are, again, just another bioretention area, a little bit different of a design. This one actually has mulch in it, but again, this one has plantings within the pond itself. And this is just another smaller bioretention area. And then this is a commercial property, but you can see it's completely vegetated. They mow around the berms of it, and basically it's a lawn around, but within the basin there's maintenance, but it, obviously, this is probably towards the end of the fall, so everything was fully grown, but they go in and basically mow this at the end of the fall. So this would get cut down, but this is how they grow in throughout the season. And this is actually at the 40B that I mentioned earlier. On the backside of the houses, you can see there's just a long infiltration basin. This is almost 200 feet long, kind of fit into the landscape, and there's a wetland. I think it's about 30 feet, 40 feet on the right side. It goes down that slope where the wooded area is. And this is just a kind of a big, flat bottom. It's very flat on this site. You can see that there's an infiltration basin on the left and part of the treatment train, or these two sediment four bays for off-the-road, water flows off that road into those. They're very shallow, about a foot deep, and then it flows into the infiltration basin. And again, just a different infiltration basin, the way it looks. If you look far in the background to get a four bay, we actually used what they call gabions, which are basically just stone-filled cages, but that way you're able to treat the stormwater before it comes into this infiltration basin. And I think this is very similar to the other infiltration, or bioretention, that one that we saw. You can see it's vegetated, there's plantings within the basin itself. So with that, I think that's all I have to present for new information, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
The grading plans we have in our packages from Teresa, so I don't know if you have any questions about those. James, I think, is on this call, but he did review these grading plans, and he, via email, let Val and I know that these do meet the constructibility requirements, and we're not really looking at constructibility issues, since there would be an amount of fill that would be necessary to build these, but it does, in his estimation, prove out the constructibility And then the other information was just the impervious surface. I don't have those up here because they're just big tables of numbers, but it does, those tables which are in your information do show the total impervious surface for both the conventional subdivision, the yield plan, and for the OSRD. And in talking to Val, when you look at the net, when you look at a development like this, you look at the net, so it includes all the impervious surfaces in each of the lots, the entire access roadway, to determine how much lot would be covered with impervious surfaces. So that's the numbers that are resolved at the end here for both of them are in the range of 10%. The trigger for a special permit for the Water Resource Protection overlay is 15%. So based on this, it does not look like that we need to go through that special permit since we would not have that amount of covered area. Well, is that?
That's correct. Yep. So both, they're basically, the tables show that we are under that 15% threshold, so we wouldn't be seeking a special permit for the watershed overlay.
When would we know when you, when the design for the water detention plans, like, which one, bio or just the grass, like, when will we see that?
So that's when, if we move forward, depending what track we go, obviously, we're dependent on a special permit to design the OSRD, but that would be during the definitive stage. We would completely design the stormwater systems. And again, sometimes depends on the grades and how much water's contributing, that you have different types of systems and treatment that you provide to the stormwater. So those were kind of just representative photos, but you typically, on a development this size, we would have kind of a mix. But those were the open surface basins. We would also be proposing most likely underground roof recharge, basically to limit our impacts and spread out the groundwater recharge.
And that would be on each individual lot, which is what you're drawing, show is that there's a roof recharge retention basin or something?
Correct. Yeah. So we show them just preliminary, but that's the intent on how we're going to approach this project, is to try to spread out the impacts of our development, per se.
With that, part of the question before us is whether the drainage basins and these areas would be part of, considered part of the open space. So that's why I asked for the photographs, so that we get a visual idea of the fact that they're green and they're open space. We can condition the special permit to say that because we're, if we do decide to include them as open space, that they need to actually look like open space. And that they wouldn't be sort of hardscape structures in that area.
Are all of those areas, will they all be off people's property?
They're outside of lots.
They're all outside the lots. Okay.
That's the intent right now. I can't say for certain until we get down to the full design, but the idea is to, yeah, they're very small lots, so we're trying to basically take those off so you have a little bit of usable space on the individual lots.
So I think you don't have anything more for us, right? And that, James and Val, can you two weigh in whether you have any further questions for the applicant?
Can you hear me? This is Val.
Hi, Val. Yeah, we can hear you.
So there's that, that smaller open space lot that's not really connected to the larger open space?
On the northwest corner, you're saying?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
And it's marked as forested recreation land, and I just wanted to better understand that, if that meant that that would be like, not permanent, like, untouched land, but perhaps that's going to be something that's more manicured with brush removed and kind of a grassy area under the trees to, or is it meant to be like a natural landscaped area that's generally untouched?
Yeah. So I think you're talking about kind of the segmented portions of what we're showing as the open space. We were, the intent is to leave those as naturalized as possible. It's not, we were trying to make our lots kind of all the same size, so we didn't include them. So it's not a contiguous piece of the open space, but it's something that we would intend to leave in a natural state, and hopefully restrict it.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Yeah, and to confirm, Will, that is not included in the 70% contiguous open space?
Correct. The number's a little bit greater. I forget, it's 73%, but that's, the total open space is 73, but the contiguous space is the 71, I believe it is.
And that, that's the requirement that we look at, is a contiguous open space, so that even though it's open, it's not counted towards the 70%, that gives them the right to the 20% increase. James, did you have any other questions if you're on?
Yeah, I'm lucky to hear you.
I'm sorry?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, I didn't have any further questions for Will. What he described sounds pretty much like what I saw during my review.
James, can you, I'm sorry, I don't think we can hear you that well. If you can maybe get closer to your microphone.
Okay. How's this? Is this better?
I think that's better.
Okay. Yeah, so I was just saying that the things that Will has presented pretty much echo what I reviewed, so I don't think I have any further questions.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Planning Board members, anything else for the applicant?
I got one more question. So whoever maintains the open space at the end of the day will be responsible for maintaining, like, the leaching fields and the, no, no.
No, not quite. So the leaching facility and the stormwater system, everything that is kind of part of that will be managed by the association. So we would have an easement, giving them the rights to go manage it, but everything would be held with the association of the development. So they're responsible for the maintenance of the septic system, responsibility of the stormwater system as well.
All right. At this time, I will open up the floor to members of the public in the room. If you have questions, what I'd like to do is go through questions and ask and answer those questions first, and then when questions are concluded, we'll go to any additional public comment. So questions, anyone? Come to the microphone, please, and name and, and address.
My name is Susan, excuse me, my name is Susan Scott Robinson. My address is 4 Turtleback Road. These are questions for the applicant, correct? Wondering if the proposed emergency access road is included in your impervious surface calculations?
So please speak into the microphone so that you stay recorded.
The question was, is the emergency access road that was proposed included in his impervious surface calculation?
So we actually broke that down on our tables. You'll see it's called the right-of-way, we call that, R-O-W, so all the pavement, including that access easement, is included in those calculations.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Questions?
Peter Ferrio, 26 Rocky Hill Road. I apologize if I haven't followed along so closely, but out of the 20 or so unresolved or open items that Weston and Sampson identified, how many of them are unresolved?
They're all resolved at this point.
All resolved, okay. This question may be for you or Will. Couple of names popped up, Gramoz, Gramoz, Nima?
Can you speak to the microphone, please?
I apologize. A couple of names popped up. I was wondering who they are. Daniel Gorman and Mamos, Rema?
Daniel Gorman's 44.
Right. Those are representatives of Bell Point Properties.
Okay. So representatives, owners, Bell Point will be the owner until this is sold off? Is that what I understand?
Bell Point is a developer.
Okay.
And those two names, Dan Gorman and I'm not going to pronounce the other name properly, those are both gentlemen who work for the developer, Bell Point.
Who the business address that's in Glastonbury, Connecticut, that appears to be a single-family residence?
I can't speak to that.
Can you, Will?
I can answer you. Yeah. Our applicant is Bell Point LLC, and both of those gentlemen that you mentioned are managers of the LLC. I don't know the address of the company, but that's who's the applicant.
Any other questions?
Kathy Bifaro, 15 Turtleback. I was just wondering how the emergency access road is going to be managed to ensure that the emergency access is available? Who's going to be responsible for that, and how is, how is that going to be coordinated with Turtleback Road?
Sorry. Can we get your name and address one more time?
Kathy Bifaro, 15 Turtleback.
Thank you.
All management will be privately by the Condo Association, which will include management of the emergency access, so plowing and basically making sure that it's passable at all times. So if a tree fell, they have the responsibility as the owners of the Condo Association.
So would that include any, any sort of management to the lower Turtleback Road area? Any assistance, you know, in management of that or coordination with Turtleback Road?
It's definitely something that we can discuss, kind of, once we form an association. Right now, Turtleback is a private road managed by the residents there, so the intent right now is just to manage what we're proposing, but it's definitely something that we could discuss at a different time.
Any other questions in the room? Otherwise, I'll open it up to people online if there are any questions there. I'm sorry.
I have questions for the board.
You need to come to the microphone, please, Kathy. I'm not on Zoom.
Susan Robinson, 4 Turtleback Road. I have questions for the board. You're taking them later?
I'm sorry?
Are you taking questions for the board later?
Yeah, questions for the board is fine, too.
Is fine?
Yes.
Now?
Yeah, questions, yeah.
Oh, well then. I would like to know, who's the named responsible party for determining when emergency access would be necessary? Whose decision would that be? A town official?
It would be, the reason for emergency access is for public safety reasons, for ambulance or fire engines or police, and they're the only ones who would have access through that road, and it would be their decision. And it's not intended as a shortcut. It is intended as if either Turtleback or Essex Park Road is impassable, if a tree falls down, if a power line comes down, something like that, that makes the ordinary access unavailable, then the emergency access would be used. It's not a shortcut for even public safety.
No, I understand that. I'm just curious to know who, who calls it as an emergency? Would be one of the town?
It would, it would be public safety. It would be the fire chief or whoever's acting in his stead, or the police chief, whoever's acting in his stead at that time.
Okay. My second question is then, how long could such an emergency be in effect? I'm concerned because it's not always easy to fix something that you didn't anticipate going wrong. And it's nice to say this is emergency access only, but if something happened in a major way to one of the roads, then my assumption would be... the other, you know, the access road between the two subdivisions would be held open for some, quite some length of time. So I'm asking the same question. Who would be able to call off an emergency? And if there were some, let's say, very expensive fix that was needed between these two privately owned and not publicly, at least not by DPW-supported roads, how do we know that it's going to get fixed quickly? And who, whose shoulders does that rest on?
So I, I'm not entirely clear, but the emergency access road needs to be maintained by the homeowners' association of the Essex Park Road.
I'm not asking about the access road. I'm asking about the damage to whichever, whether it was Essex Park Drive End or Turtleback End. How do you quickly get something fixed so that an emergency access between the two is no longer needed? I'm just concerned that something happens and it just goes on and on and on and on and doesn't get fixed. In the meantime, we have lot, more than twice the number of homes in the proposed subdivision as we have on Turtleback Road now. So we would presumably have three times the traffic if we were all going back and forth through each other's neighborhoods. And I can tell you Turtleback isn't built for that. This one presumably has wider roads that don't go like this.
I'm, I'm going to ask, Will, do you know how homeowner associations manage that? I do not. Or Val, if you can speak to that. I, I don't know how you ensure that repairs are made in an expeditious manner to basically close the access road. I would assume that...
It's the obligation of the homeowners' association or the homeowners in Turtleback, who don't have an association, as I understand it, but have stated during the public hearings that they maintain the road and they take down trees that fall across the road in order to maintain it. So that would be the process. It would be between the, the homeowners' association, depending on which side of this you're on, that has to repair. And the emergency access would be available so people could get to and from their homes while that's going on.
I have another question. Thank you. By the way, we have been cooperative as a neighborhood. We don't have a homeowners' association, but we have undertaken a lot of projects. Some just sharing work, sprucing up that needs to be done. Everybody brings their rake. And some that require money and contractors to make it safe and convenient for people who coming and going. So we have operated quite nicely as a neighborhood, but it's, you know, it's a lot of people already. I'm concerned about if there is a, a need for emergency access over Turtleback Road by the proposed subdivision residents. I'm concerned that some manner of recompense to the Turtleback Road residents who paid to pave the road be made whole, essentially. I mean, we, we don't want to repair a road because somebody else wore it down. It's bad enough doing it because we go back and forth 10 times a day. Is there any way that...
So this would become a civil matter between the residents of Turtleback and the homeowners' association in the OSRD?
So you're proposing that two privately owned roads and their residents make nice no matter what, and the town is out of it?
This is a private road, and so is Turtleback?
Yep.
So that is how it would have to operate?
I think you're placing a large burden on the people that are already living and owning and paying taxes on Turtleback. I know that's a comment, but sorry, couldn't resist. Okay. Then I would ask the planning board members, perhaps you know, has any consideration been given to the fact that several of the homeowners on Turtleback are of the opinion that were an access road to be provided and used, that it would mean we would be looking for, what is it? A reassessment of the, our home value? Because of potential for increased traffic and financial loss on the individual homeowners?
You could certainly take that up with the assessor's office, but that isn't, isn't part of, remain to the discussion of the emergency access road, which would be gated and would not normally be used.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kathy Bifaro, 15 Turtleback. I think, Susan, you raised an interesting question around, so the idea is that only emergency vehicles should be able to access the road. I think the concern is that, I don't know, a tree falls down to the road, you know, and Essex Park gets destroyed somehow, and then the emergency access road is opened up for a period of time to the residents, right? Is there a chance that that could happen? Because I think we'd, you know, we'd want reassurance that that wouldn't happen or that it wouldn't go on for, you know, a certain amount of time, for a prolonged period of time. So I think that's a good concern that she raised. I don't know what my question is, but I guess, how would we be assured that that wouldn't, you know, wouldn't occur? I guess that that wouldn't, that that situation wouldn't develop into a longer term, like, okay, until Essex Park gets fixed, the residents can only access their community via the Turtleback Road emergency access?
Val, do you have any insight on that?
I would just offer that if there was a serious enough event that there were trees falling down over this road and also a storm event, it would be likely that there would also be damage to Turtleback at the same time. And I think that, that there's no way to guarantee that Mother Nature won't have some sort of an impact at some future time, but that everyone operates reasonably. There are emergency access roads throughout Massachusetts where, where subdivisions are cooperatively able to share emergency road use. It would be used by residents during the emergency if it was needed, not just the emergency vehicles. Because let's say, for example, there's a fire at Turtleback Road, and there's no way out. You would have the opportunity using your vehicles to drive through the emergency access road to get out of Turtleback so that you could escape the fire, and vice versa. So there has to be the ability for both the residents and the emergency vehicles to pass.
Thank you, Val. Any other questions? Are there any questions online?
Nobody's in the chat.
I'm not on Zoom, so people on Zoom can't see my screen anymore, right?
That's correct.
How do I get back on Zoom?
You're going to have to re-log in because it's, it's your computer that kicked you out, not because the Zoom stayed on.
Sorry. Is there anyone online?
It's the same one.
Anyone online with questions?
No.
There are no questions online? We will turn it over to public comment from people in the room. If you want to approach the microphone and name and address, and your comment, please, thank you.
Ruth Perrine, Ruth Perrine, 15 Lefkin Street. I am before you to express my strong concerns about the proposed development and urge the board to consider several key points before moving forward with any approvals. First and foremost, I ask that you do not allow the developer to donate the open space to the town of Essex or to any nonprofit entity. Instead, I recommend that the entire 84.4 acres remain under the ownership of the 36 property owners with a deed restriction on the designated open space. This approach would require those homeowners to assume responsibility for maintaining the open space, the internal roads, and the drainage infrastructure, rather than shifting these long-term obligations onto the town or an outside party. This developer is coming to Essex to build homes, earn substantial profits, and then leave the community to deal with the ongoing costs and burdens. That is not development that benefits Essex. It's short-term profit at long-term public expense. The board may not make financial decisions, but the taxpayers do, and they deserve transparency and fairness. Furthermore, I urge the board to prohibit common driveways, which pose serious safety and access issues, particularly for emergency vehicles. We've already seen the problems these create, set just situations on Lowland Farm. These are not speculative concerns. They are documented challenges already affecting the community. We've heard a lot about Turtleback Road, and I sympathize with those residents. And while there are existing concerns about it being a private road, this project also raises critical questions about Essex Park Road and whether it can support the proposed traffic and access demands. Currently, there are two homes in one business with very few cars that access that road daily. In addition, the culvert on Essex Park Road must be properly engineered and possibly rebuilt to support vehicle passage and withstand long-term use. There's been a lot of talk about waivers, variances, and relief. I urge the board to resist the temptation to bypass requirements. Please make the developer meet all of the regulatory standards rather than finding ways around them. This is a test of whether our rules are meaningful or just suggestions. It's essential that there be no financial impact on the town of Essex. Every financial obligation, including roads, stormwater systems, and open space, must be borne entirely by the developer and the future homeowners within the subdivision. It's also worth noting that the current landowner moved to Alaska years ago and has effectively abandoned the property. Their interest in the long-term well-being of Essex is minimal at best. Additionally, from a fiscal perspective, a conventional plan of 40,000 square foot lots brings higher tax value to the town and helps offset municipal service costs. By contrast, under the open space residential design approach, 70% of the land is untaxed, even though more homes require more town services. To make matters worse, 10,000 square foot lots can't be accurately assessed, leading to more loss of revenue. Finally, in any portion of the proposed develop, I'm sorry, if any portion of the proposed development includes fields or trails, I ask, who will maintain them? Without a clear answer, this becomes yet another cost potentially dumped on the town or neglected entirely. I strongly recommend that the planning board require a gated emergency access road at the Turtleback connection, restricted to emergency vehicles only. Thank you for your time and consideration. This development has the potential to significantly impact Essex, and it's essential that the town not be left with the burdens it did not ask for and certainly cannot afford. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Other comments?
Well said, Ruth. No one has spoken up in support of this. It's not good for the town of Essex. There's certain issues I know that aren't within your...
Hold on one sec.
I just need to know, do you want name and address for each one? Or do, are you okay with me collecting it from a separate thing? Does it matter for the recording?
Yeah, and when you get up to the microphone, you name an address. So just, even though you've been up before, it's so people can follow the recording.
Peter Ferrio, 26 Rocky Hill Road.
Thank you.
As I said, well said, Ruth. There's nobody in this town that's in support of this. There are certain things that aren't within your purview. But there's a lot of open items here. I'd still like to know, where's the hazardous waste site in relationship to the leach field? In relationship to the development? In relationship to the L Y Brook? As we said, it's good bankrupt the school system. It's not good for the town. And I hope you all have, you know, the best interests of the town at hand. People have said to me, why are you going up there, Peter? What do you have in the game? Nothing. Been in the town for 65 years. Hopefully, I have another 15 or 20 here. And I don't want projects like this ruining the town. Planning Board, please step up. Find a reason to deny this. Thank you very much.
Other comments, please?
Jean Rainey, 14 Turtleback Road. My comment will be brief. I just wanted to add that if this plan does move forward, I would request that it include a stipulation that all construction vehicles would access the site only through the new development and not over Turtleback Road for several obvious reasons. Not just the noise and disruption, but the cost to the residents of repairing Turtleback Road and the inevitable damage that several years of construction vehicles would cause to a road we just recently put nearly $100,000 into.
Thank you. Other comments from folks in the room? Any comments from anyone online?
Nobody in the chat.
No one in the chat? Planning Board members, any final comments? Questions? That said, with no more comments from either members of the public or the planning board, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. So we still have a few minutes before the second public hearing of this evening. And I will take that time to, and Val, please weigh in here and feel free to offer guidance to the planning board. In, in your meeting materials, Val has prepared a draft of a special permit that could authorize the OSRD. Keeping in mind that the right to develop property is established in Mass. general law, and the default here is a conventional subdivision plan that we're using as the yield plan to establish the open space number of parcels. So the intent of having the open space development as an option for Essex is to provide a less intrusive development and to protect more open space. So the, and that, that's memorialized in some of the introductory language in the OSRD section of the bylaw that talks about why it's intended to be a, a good idea. So we do have the, the draft from Val. It's not a final draft by any stretch. It's something we're not going to obviously get through in the next 11 minutes. If people have questions or comments, this is a good time to ask either Val or James right now. He's still on the, the call with us. He has reviewed all the additional materials that Maureen Cameron has submitted for this sort of final pass. Like I said, he is, he has agreed that the year, the grading sketches shown for the lots that he had identified on the conventional plan, he agrees that they are buildable. So he has, I believe, and James, correct me if I'm wrong, he said he has no more comments on any of the material that they provided. He has done a review of Val's draft, and it had some comments earlier today. Those came in at a time when we couldn't really incorporate them into what you have in front of us. So I think the best way forward is to, to, to look through this now, see if you have any comments or questions for Val in the next couple of minutes. If you do, she can help you with those. And we will prepare another version of this. Go ahead.
Val, I'm assuming on the draft here, the, the first page, these were comments that you were looking for the applicant to answer?
Yes.
Concerning the open space, which I think Will addressed in regards to the drainage septic leaching areas if they were to be considered part of the open space. But the second part of that was what was envisioned with the use of the wooded recreation area?
Yes.
Do we have an answer for that?
They said it would remain in its natural state.
That, that's a question for, for Will.
Yeah, it was for Will, but maybe I missed it.
We, we addressed that during the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Tonight.
What was that, Val?
I'm sorry. This evening, we addressed it. This evening, we addressed it.
So you're set with that question?
I am.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So, Val, on page five, number three, it says the town will be gaining approximately 55 acres of permanent open space, but that's not true, right?
Why is that not true?
I thought that would be a nonprofit...
Oh, you're talking about the town per se?
Yeah. Yeah. That's what I was like. Yeah.
That probably needs to be reworded, that the town would benefit from it, but the town won't take...
But will not own it, will not be gaining it.
You might own it. We haven't... So we can say that in this case, the town will benefit by having approximately 55 acres of permanent open space because it meets almost all of the conditions of why an open space residential development would be recommended under the zoning bylaw. And it's, I think, consistent with the open space and recreation plan, consistent with protecting the water quality of the town, and consistent with other goals that the town has listed. In terms of the... This is... These are the reasons why you might grant the open space residential development. That's one of the reasons.
You're just talking about the wording that is as far as...
Yeah, the wording, because it's misleading.
The town... The town may... We haven't... Since no one has resolved yet what's going to happen with the open space, what we've put in condition number seven on page eight, the recommended condition would be that prior to release of the 15th lot from the subdivision covenant, the open space plan, or the open space shown on the plan will either have a permanent conservation restriction recorded on the open space property, or, as outlined in the zoning bylaw, the land shall be accepted by town meeting into the care and custody of the Conservation Commission under Article 97 of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That's specifically called out in the zoning bylaw. Or if the Planning Board accepts an alternate arrangement or specifically approves a release for any lot. So basically, we're saying they get about a third or half of the lots can be released and start building, but after that, they have to stop until they've resolved how the open space is going to be managed, unless, when they get to us with the definitive plan, they have a specific answer for that.
Is this a conventional way to do this, understanding this is our first OSRD, and I know you've done others? Is that sort of an accepted process as far as resolving the disposition of the open space?
Yes, it is.
Do you guys have other questions for Val at this time? I know we're going to have more questions as we work through this. There's a lot here. I understand that. This isn't your last...
Just because we have some time. How much more time do we have?
I'm sorry?
How much more time do we have?
We have five more minutes. It's five minutes of eight, and at 8:00, we're going to move to the other public hearing.
So in this draft, does it... When they're building the development, will they be clearing all the lots at one time, or will they be clearing on a lot-by-lot basis? In other words, if the lot is not purchased, will it remain in a more natural state? Do we know this? And if we would like it to happen that way, can we write that into this?
I think it's expensive, and I think that would be something that you might want to have a conversation with the developer about, because the staging to remove trees and do the stumping and clearing is costly and time-consuming, and I'm not sure that doing a lot-by-lot allowance is economically feasible.
But we could conceivably ask for that.
We could also look at... There are four different roads here, and we could look at it like on a road-by-road basis or a lot, you know, a chunk of lots rather than one by one. There's 36 lots if there were 12 and 12 and 12 or something.
Yeah. Because like if you look at the Georgetown lot that he showed, there's a bunch of cleared space and no houses and potentially no purchasers, you know? So they could clear 36 lots and get four houses, and it just feels like an unfortunate scenario in which, you know, there's a detriment to the land for no particularly good reason, given that these will be a lot-by-lot sale. So...
Are there going to be a lot-by-lot sale?
I don't know. Have you sold all the lots? You know? I mean, that's...
Yeah. And speaking to the developer, they're considering different options as far as whether they would actually build and develop properties themselves or just sell lots. And, you know, some of that is depending on whether they're going to be doing the OSRD, whether they get this permit to do this, or whether they would be pursuing the conventional subdivision plan. So they're not going too far ahead with plans yet until they know whether this is going to be an option for them or not. So those are conversations that we can have during the definitive plan, because with a definitive plan, we have the ability to have input into how that's all organized.
And then, this is a really quick one, but like on number two on page five and on number 10 on page four, could we use a word other than superior? I think the notion that development is superior in any format may be inappropriate, and that we could...
Just superior to the conventional subdivision?
Well, that's an opinion. It's a qualitative opinion, so if we can make it a little more generic...
The Planning Board is supposed to be making a qualitative opinion on issuing a special permit.
I don't know that stating that is, you know, we'd have to all agree that it's superior.
That's why this is a draft.
Yeah. That's... I'm just pointing out that word.
Yeah. That's the whole point of having a draft, is that we can sit here and noodle it. Pick at it. Yeah.
So, Val, I have a question for you. Going back to item seven on page eight of the draft, is there... Maybe I missed this, but is there a way that we can require the developer to maintain ownership of the open space? Like, I mean, I think Ruth brought up some really good points, and I'd be curious if... Because, you know, we've... There are several options here, right? That it could go to a conservation restriction. It could go to, I assume, some kind of conservation association. Or if it's somehow accepted by town meeting, it would... Or it could come into the custody of the town. But could we... I'd be curious to know more how we can require the developer and then hence the future members of the association to retain ownership of the open space.
We can talk about that. I mean, you only have one minute left, and I don't want to dive too far into the weeds, but I can expand on that at the next meeting.
Okay. Thanks.
So it is 8:00 now, so we will change channels. It is 8:00, and I will take a motion to reopen the public hearing that was originally opened on June 18th and continued to this evening on the application for a special permit authorizing mixed use with one commercial business unit and six residential units under sections, bylaw section 6-3.3.3.5.1.4 and 6-3.3.3.7 for property at 44 Main Street. Take a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Simone. Second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Can I ask a quick question? If you're not connected to the Internet, do you want to... Are you going to be showing slides?
He's on Zoom.
He's on Zoom. Okay.
Oh, okay.
So you're off the hook.
Am I on or not? I couldn't figure that out.
You're on.
Okay. So I need to get the screen. I need to get on Zoom, right? I don't... I'm sorry.
You're in Zoom, and you're currently sharing your screen. So go to the Internet.
Sorry. That's stupid. I'm sorry. I have to do the statement. I apologize for technical difficulties. I thought I knew what was going on, but clearly I don't. The Planning Board operates under the provision of the Mass. general laws, Chapter 48 zoning and Chapter 39, the open meeting law, and of the Town of Essex bylaws, Chapter 6 zoning. To conduct this public hearing effectively and fairly, our process tonight will be as follows. First, after these opening remarks and a brief review of outstanding issues, the applicant will be allowed to make an uninterrupted presentation of additional information. Second, we will entertain questions, first from members of the Planning Board, Town Planner Val Massard, and Building Inspector Bill Samburn, who has not able to join us this evening, and then from members of the public recognizing those in attendance here first, and then those online. After questions have been addressed, we will hear comments in the same order. As the Chair, I will recognize the speakers and set time limits if necessary. To ask a question or make a comment, online participants will please enter only your full name and address in the chat and then wait to be recognized by the Chair. Please do not put questions or comments directly into the chat, and please keep your microphones on mute throughout the hearing unless recognized to speak. In-person participants will please come to the podium and will recognize, give their full name and address before asking a question or making a comment. Please speak closely to the microphone. Six inches away is good. We ask that you can find your questions and comments to the project that is the subject of this hearing and to matters that are under the jurisdiction of this board. In addition, we ask that citizens inform themselves of the provisions of the laws under which we operate, in particular, of the Essex zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw is available online at www.sxma.org, and hard copies can be provided if requested. Copies of the applicable Massachusetts general laws may be searched online at ma-legislature.gov/laws/ backslash laws backslash general laws. Documents for this project may be found on... Do we have them on the town website? No. But no. They're available in the town clerk's office. After comments from the public, the Planning Board members will be able to make final comments, and the hearing will be closed or continued to July 16, 2025. Thank you for your engagement. Before I turn the floor over to the applicant to address the questions and comments that were forwarded to them by me and from members of the Planning Board, I wanted to share some questions that I posed to Town Council and their answers on these matters as they apply to the special permit application before us this evening. And some of these questions were raised after our last meeting, and I think it's important that everyone understand the scope and context of the special permit that's in front of us this evening. So the first question pertained to the dimensional standards in our bylaw, and the question is if the Planning Board, in the special permit process, has the ability or authority to require more restrictive dimensional requirements than are permitted in the bylaw. And Town Council opines that if the proposed building meets the zoning bylaw's dimensional requirements, the Planning Board cannot require the proposed building to be smaller. So the dimensional standards in the downtown district are what we need to use as a measure of evaluating the building. Then, I know there have been a number of issues raised about easements across the property. There is the Choak Court that accesses the two properties on the south border of the property, and there's also sort of a de facto easement across the property out to Burnham Court. And we asked about these easements and the sort of gentleman's agreements that have been in place to date, and both Val and Town Council have said that easements across private property is a private matter, and the Planning Board has no jurisdiction over these easements. So we aren't allowed to... We don't have the authority to regulate or control easements on private property. And that's... Town Council says, in my opinion, it's a private party matter, and the Planning Board has no jurisdiction. Then, there is an existing storage building on the rear of the building that wasn't depicted on the renderings that we saw, but was shown on the site plans that were provided in paper version to the board and the town clerk. And we're asking about this building, and Town Council says the existing storage building should be shown on site plans if and until it is removed. Additionally, the board should determine what the intentions of the applicant are with regard to the storage building, and then can condition the decision accordingly. The council also responds to a question about division of the property and says that the board may condition that the lot never be subdivided in the special permit. And then finally, if the lot were to be subdivided, the increased density by special permit would be likely to create a zoning violation. So that point being is that's a condition that we could include in a special permit, is that the lot would not be subdivided, because we're considering a more dense use in this special permit. And then, there's also discussion about the... One of the parts of this special permit is that the proposal does not meet the new requirements that were added regarding the percentage or area of non-residential use. And Town Council says that, in my opinion, the lobby area would be considered as a residential use is exclusively for the residential units. Further, in my opinion, the 600 square feet may be amended and deviated by the special permit as noted in line C. And line C is the one, is the line in the bylaw that allows the applicant not to meet the requirements in lines A or B, which is the 950 square feet and the 30% lot frontage through special permit. So that's part of this special permit application, is recognizing that the 600 square feet of non-residential use does not meet those requirements, but still comprises the sort of front and center portion of the building on the first floor, fronting on Main Street. So I just wanted to share that background from Town Council before we go in, because I think it's important to keep in context with what we're looking at here. That said, I will turn the meeting over to the applicant for additional information that we had talked about. You ready?
For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions with an address of 123 Main Street in Gloucester. Turn my screen back up. Again, I'm here on behalf of Costello Construction and Remodeling. The Costellos are here tonight. The owner of the property are Robert and Susan Covielo. Susan is here this evening, and there is an active agreement to have the property sold to the Costellos upon successful permitting of a replacement structure. So by way of... Wait for it to come around. By way of a refresher, we are requesting a special permit for a mixed-use building with more than four residential dwelling units. It's under bylaw section 6-3.3.3.5.1.4 and 6. And we need a special permit because you go with four dwelling units. You need to... It's not just by right with site plan review. On June 18th, the like hearing was open. The project was presented. We took questions from the public. We took comments from the public. We're continued to tonight, and tonight, we're here to address any concerns that the Chair alluded to. One of the concerns in our list may be a little different than the Chair's list, was kind of based on our notes from the last meeting. One of the questions is about traffic. Now, I do want to stress to the Planning Board that if we're able to get a special permit from you, we'll be back before you with a site plan review application. So a lot of the kind of questions that were raised that... So a lot of the kind of questions that were raised at the last meeting, I think get more dialed in upon site plan review. However, we did kind of want to just touch some of the big ones. So with traffic, it's essentially a net increase of 30 trips per day. That's over an entire day. And again, we have not dialed in the traffic study so deep that we can give you exact, you know, peak, but being very conservative, let's say, half of all these extra 30 trips happen during the two peak hours, morning and evening. That would be 15 trips over the course of the, divided between the morning hour and the evening hour, so that's seven and a half cars per those peak hours. So that's about one extra car every eight minutes or so in the peak hours, and the other 15 trickle in throughout the course of the day. So, again, at site plan review, we'll have a more comprehensive, you know, discussion about traffic, but the broad look is, we anticipate 30 extra trips to the site from what happens currently. And again, this is located on a state highway on a large road, 30 extra trips on 133 is going to be very hard to notice for those, those in traffic with them. Another question was relating to parking. And so I just want to confirm that the parking does comply with all of the bylaw requirements. So every open air space is 30 feet back from the road, that's why in fact, toward, when we look at the open air spaces here outside the commercial area, one of the things we talked about was that there is only room for those, those three spaces, leading to a total of two being allocated directly for the commercial space, and that is because we can't go any further to the left, as you look at it, without getting into the 30-foot parking setback from Main Street. The parking spaces inside are all screened, and they're underneath the building and have walls around them, so they are not open-air parking, and are not required to be 30 feet back from Burnham Court. We have one parking space per bedroom, there are 12 bedrooms, 12 spaces allocated for those 12 bedrooms. We have two parking spaces for the commercial use, this allows for office use or other non-retail business use. And we have one handicap accessible space, it's a handicap van accessible space, again, that was highlighted out here, it's in the open air section, and that meets the applicable ADA requirements. Moving on from there. Another question was the building in the rear. And so right now, there is no proposed change to the structure, to remain used for storage at this time. We're willing to accept conditions, I think along the lines of what the chair mentioned. One I would, I do want to offer is obviously, as we mentioned last meeting, it's got to be safe. We're not looking to, you know, have any sort of eyesores or any sort of dangerous conditions. So if you want, if you're concerned about the, the building in its current iteration, and you want to say, hey, you have to have it shored up before you get your occupancy permit for the new building, that's totally fine. It's in everyone's best interest to make sure that building staying in place is going to stay safely in place for now. And the second is I suggested a condition that any future change of use requires a modification of the special permit. It was very similar to what the, the chair seemed to have gotten from town council, and by, you know, my read of your bylaw and just general 40A applies, I don't think, even if you didn't condition it this way, that we could do something on the back portion of this lot in the future without modifying the special permit, because this special permit is based on the site plan provided, and the site plan provided simply shows that building existing. So if in the future that ever was to change, I think the law requires the modification of the special permit. If we want to be extra safe and expressly write that into any approval, I certainly don't have an issue with that, because again, I think it's just codifying what would be required regardless. And then, I think there was, oh, the applicability of the revised bylaw. So, we got two or three things here. First off, the initial permit to remove and replace this building was applied for prior to the warrant being published. So again, my understanding is that the project is actually being governed by the previous version of the bylaw, and that any changes made, you know, listed on the warrant or approved at town meeting happened after the initial applications for the, the work to be done on this site. Again, if this board says, hey, listen, we think it's probably safer to just give you a special permit to reduce, if you think one is needed, that's fine. However, I don't know that it's actually needed, because if you read it, it simply says the portion of non-residential use on the first floor, so meet at least one of the following criteria, and the subsection I is the minimum of 950 square feet. And so between the, the lobby, which is not habitable space, and the commercial unit on the first floor, is 1,145 square feet of non-residential space on the first floor. So I don't know that we're actually under that 950 square feet. Again, if you want to be extra cautious, say, hey, listen, we're not sure whether this lobby counts or not toward non-residential space, we're willing to give you a special permit to reduce the square footage requirement by 350. Again, that's, that's fine, I'm happy to have, you know, a safety net there. But again, my, my initial two reads of it are, one, because the initial permitting began prior to this bylaw change, it doesn't apply. And two, even if it does, I think by the, the literal language here, that it has to be non-residential use on the first floor, we're over 950 and don't need a reduction anyway. But again, I leave that to the board. If you feel that this does not qualify as having more than 950, and you believe this new bylaw does apply, but you're willing to grant a 350-square-foot waiver, or, you know, special permit rather, that's fine with me as well. I think, there were some other questions about the flow of traffic, and again, this probably comes up more in site plan review. Last meeting, I did suggest that we thought it made sense for all traffic using the garage to come in off Burnham and exit through Main. The two-way traffic would primarily exist on the Main Street side for those five open air spaces, the three nearest the commercial unit, and those two, kind of the bottom right. So we anticipate that area of the parking would be bidirectional, people coming in from Main and leaving from Main, as they do currently. But as far as the garage itself, we think a flow through in one direction is probably the way to go. But again, it'll probably get dialed in at site plan review, and we're happy to kind of, you know, discuss that. I think there was one other question, I'm going to skip forward a bunch of slides to get to the renderings. I think there was some, some concern, because there isn't a lot of this kind of proposed parking in the Town of Essex currently. And so, the top half of this, the top rendering on the screen now, is kind of a kitty-cornered look, standing in Main Street. What I'd call the front of the building is on the left-hand side, and what I would call the exit for the garage is on the right-hand side. And if I can zoom in, you can kind of see, so it has solid walls all around, and then just kind of this opening that allows cars to exit from it. So walking by, it'll kind of look like an open mouth of a garage, but otherwise, the, there's finished walls going throughout the exterior areas of that parking garage. If you look at the bottom photo that I'm zooming in on now, again, you can see on the left-hand side of this would be what I'd call the entrance off Burnham's Court in this area right here, right? This is the entrance. And so again, even though here and here, there are parking spaces behind there, you can't see them because it's just made to look like the rest of the building, there's just that mouth that is open to allow cars to enter on this Burnham Court side. I don't know that I have any other particular points I wanted to hit. Obviously, if you think I've missed something, I'm happy to go back, but for now, I think that's all I needed to kind of touch on since last time.
Great, thank you. Board members, do you have questions, further questions for the applicant? Either on information that's already been provided, or additional information from this evening?
Yes. Last week, I, I went to the site to visit with some residents to hear their concerns. I did call our chair first to find out if it was appropriate, and I, and that was fine, which it was. But there is real concern about the flow of traffic, especially on Choate Court, where there will be five cars, and the backlot house, which did cut through, that had an easement across the property, would literally have to back out or back in. And I know that with this proposed property, that you're saying that it would be 30 visits, but, or turnarounds for each of the residents or the commercial owners.
30 trips total for the whole building.
30 trips. But we're not accounting for visitors and guests and Amazon trucks and deliveries, and that complicate that as well.
So I can have the engineer who's here with me today come speak to that more, but these, these number generations anticipate traffic in general driven by these types of construction. So it's not just, oh, here's so many trips the resident is going to make. I believe these, these things factor in, so if you'd like, I can have the engineer come up and give some more detail as to how the traffic is calculated.
Another concern that I have is, with this special permit, we have to account how it will impact the neighbors, and, and I do feel that the traffic needs to be studied more, and how people then readjust how they normally go in and out. That island right there on Main Street is a problem, and then that intersection is right there, which is always slow and, and a lot of movement in there, and it just would make sense if we had a traffic study to, to really understand how it's going to impact this area and the residents. And so that's why I went to the site and to hear the concerns, and I just think it would be prudent on the planning board to consider that.
May I respond to that further?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having more technical difficulties.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure it's okay for me to respond now. So, so to that point, again, as I, as I mentioned, because this is going to require a site plan review, and that is typically the time in which this board digs into traffic studies, site lines, that sort of thing, and right now, we're at a special permit where we're talking about, you know, use, right? Again, it's kind of a more broad concept of, is what's being proposed within the specs laid out by the bylaw? And so, again, one of those things where you wouldn't have to add this to the condition because it's the law anyway, but if you were to simply say, to address your traffic concerns, saying, yes, we think, you know, the use is appropriate, subject to, you know, site plan review and approval by the planning board, which we have to get anyway, and at that time, we would then go through and again, provide you kind of the more robust data that you would normally see during site plan review. But at this stage, we're just kind of again talking about the, the idea of a mixed use with this much commercial, this much residential, and the kind of general layout of the site is what you'd be permitting. You would not be giving up your ability to ensure that traffic was safe, and if it's, again, a condition of this permit, and we get to site plan review, and you say, hey guys, your traffic is a real nightmare, we can't find a safe way to make this work, well, in the special permit you will have granted does us no good, because a stated condition, site plan approval, is not satisfied. And so this permit won't allow the building to go forward absent us demonstrating through site plan review that the traffic situation does meet the requisite safety standards that you'd seek.
To put a little context around that, since the special permit that we're considering is based on, is, is a use, so we're looking at essentially what you would have by right is, is a mixed-use property that has three residential units, and we're looking at a special permit for one that has six residential units. So the, the delta here is three additional residential units, and that's the increase in traffic. So I think it would be reasonable to understand the effects of three more residential units on traffic. Understanding the baseline would be what you are entitled to by right as three, three residential units with a commercial unit. So I think that would be worth reviewing, is, is understanding the effects of the three additional units, because that is relevant to our granting a special permit that allows six units instead of three. Board members, do you have further questions?
Yeah, I have a question about the non-residential use. I think I am a little concerned about not obtaining the full potential of the 950 square feet. I think your definition that the residential lobby is non-residential use, I find that a little disingenuous. I think that is residential use, there's going to be essentially area set aside for the exclusive use of the residents, probably have mailboxes, et cetera. So I think trying to lump that into the non-residential use is, is not something that I would encourage.
We did, I, I'll just reiterate what I did get from council that says, in my opinion, the lobby area would be considered a residential use, as it is exclusively for the residential units. Further, in my opinion, the 600 square feet may be deviated from, meaning the 950 square feet can be deviated from via the special permit, because the, the bylaw does allow us to deviate from that 950 feet if we feel that the intent of sort of featuring non-residential use on the front-facing area of the building is met.
You didn't happen to ask them about the timing of them submitting? Does that affect, affect us?
So we asked about that before, and, and what happened was that before the warrant was advertised, the applicant did apply for a building permit, but that was for the unit, the proposal that went in front of town meeting that had 16 units. And she has earlier opined that a, a building permit would need to be reapplied for, for the sixth unit. It's substantially different, that same permit would not be applicable. So by, by our council's guidance, this is a project that would fall under the new bylaw. The applicant has in the special permit application, which we, I don't know if you guys have this one before, but the, the special permit application does say that the proposed use and activity requiring the special permit is mixed use with one commercial business unit and six two-bedroom residential units, and then cites section 6-3.3, .3.7, which is the one that says three, four or more residential units is by special permit. And then they do also reference section 6-3.3, .5, .1, .4, which is the section in A, B, and C that does require, A requires 950 square feet, B requires 30% of the building frontage on the main-facing street, and then item C allows deviation from any of those requirements through special permit. So this special permit application acknowledges that they need that relief for, from that section. So I think it's, it's already incorporated into your special permit application that you're seeking approval of the 600 square feet as, as fulfilling the intent of, of the mixed-use property, the commercial component of the mixed-use property.
Yeah, we applied as conservatively as possible, in case the interpretation you've outlined is the one the, the board chooses to go with.
I'm sorry?
Yes, you're correct, we applied, you know, and tried to be as conservative as possible in our applications, so that if the board and, you know, if town council has made a determination that you've stated, that we'd have the requisite request in.
Right, and I, and I think that, I believe that's where we are.
It would also be helpful if you could give a rendering of the, the building in scale with the neighboring houses, so they can interpret the height and sort of that, how that will take that space up. I mean, the drawings you have given us for the original design is pretty much the design of the, the building, but it doesn't really give us the impact in the space next relatively to the other houses, and I think the public is wanting to see that, and I think it would be helpful to understand that.
Yeah, I can understand the request, but again, at the end of the day, we are, you, you know, the town has set the guidelines for how tall something should be, how close to something else it should be, and if we meet all those, you'd expect the town would understand what it is we're doing. I appreciate when you're saying, hey, I'm going to be too close, I'm going to be too tall, I'm going to exceed this, but don't worry, it's still going to look right. But if we are by definition doing what the town has asked us to do, I don't know how a rendering helps you decide whether or not it looks right, because by definition, it's the correct distance from the street, by definition, it's the correct height, by definition, it's the correct distance from any neighboring property. And so you shouldn't need a rendering to understand what that looks like. And so you shouldn't need a rendering to understand what that looks like, because it's not about what it looks like if you are meeting the criteria.
I'm not asking you to do a new rendering. You already have the design that can be plopped down on a satellite map with a street view. That's what I'm talking about. Not to do any more work.
Oh, I'm, okay.
No, no, just to put it in place so we can see what it, how it fits. And for the public and neighbors, they want to understand how it fits in this space visually. Most people aren't visual, and this would be really helpful. Thank you.
It certainly would be helpful, and we've had other requests for that information. But what the applicant has said is also what town council has opined, is if they meet our dimensional standards, even if we see a rendering, that we don't have the ability to ask for it to be lower or setback.
No.
Yeah.
But we do have, we do have the ability to say, no, we don't want six. Right?
We do have the ability to say we don't want six, but just to play devil's-
So the reason for doing something like that would be to show that the impact of six is minimal compared to the impact of three, you know.
But you're making an assumption here, and I'm playing devil's advocate, just because what, I'm not even playing devil's advocate, I'm just trying to play by the rules here. They could, the applicant could come back with this exact building envelope and propose three, four-bedroom units that are each two stories tall. So they could combine the two units in the front and each of the units in the back and have the same number of parking spaces, the same number of bedrooms, but it would be three units instead of six units. And they would be larger units, but the building would look identical, and we wouldn't be having a hearing for it. So I'm just trying to put, you know, it's not as if we say no to six and they come back with three, the building's going to be half the size. They could also come, you know, just if you look at what is by right in our bylaw, they could come with a complete commercial building, they could put an office building there, for example, that would be, you know, Route 128, brick veneer, something-looking building there, and that would meet our bylaw. So, yeah, we can ask for a rendering, but that doesn't necessarily mean that a three-unit building would necessarily be smaller or any other legally permitted use on this property, because they have met our dimensional requirements for height, setback, lot coverage. And the lot coverage also meets with the storage building in back in place. They're still within a lot coverage with that. So I'm not advocating either way, I'm just trying to lay out the actual, what's in the bylaw.
Yeah, it's just an additional, it's just additional information that is not going to affect how, it's just a visual impact, and I think that needs to be, I think that's fair to ask.
It's fair to ask, and it would be helpful for butters and neighbors, but it's also not, that's not something that you can put, you could, but it would be inappropriate, I believe. And we can, tell us, town council, about any of these, I'm happy to take all of this to town council, because I want this to be clear and legit, straight up. To put a condition on a special, because a special permit, if and when we write a special permit, it's a document that gets carried with the deed of the property, it gets filed with the registry, and it's a legal document that carries. So we just need to be mindful of the caveats that we put in a special permit, because something that, like, you know, to ask for a rendering, we can ask for that, but I don't know that we would necessarily put that in a special permit as a condition, because that's something that's a temporary, okay.
No.
Okay. I just wasn't sure where you were going, so we can ask.
Just visual.
But I think, if I can add to that, I think the visual does have some merit, because if it were three units versus six units, even though I understand, you know, the massing or the volume would be identical, it would have a different density, right? You're talking different quantities of balconies, I think it would have a different look. So I think just having another way to assess it vis-à-vis its surroundings wouldn't be a bad thing.
I think it might be a positive for them, not a negative.
What's that?
I think it may be a positive for them, not a negative. I, you know, in my mind, asking for that is to show that it doesn't have as much impact as I think people think it will.
Exactly. I think it'll help their case, so.
But I understand your point.
Yeah, so, two things. One is, again, appreciating the question that's been, the request that's been made, appreciating the situation we're in, but trying to get some pragmatism here into the process, which is not always possible in permitting. So we have, you know, the Coviellos who are really hoping this moves forward, there's some certainty whether or not the Costellos are going to be able to move forward this, right? And seeing as, because we have site plan review coming up with you, even if successful, you know, we got a special permit out of you with this information that's been provided, we still have to come back to you anyway, I'm curious whether the board would consider saying, you know, as I think the chair kind of reiterated from town council, the submission we've provided meets the necessary information you need to make a decision on a special permit. And then, with the understanding that at site plan review, when we come in to discuss, we're going to be showing, again, the more detailed traffic, we'll show a street view rendering that shows, you know, the kind of existing building and the new building superimposed on top of it. Like, you get a chance to analyze all of that, and that honestly would probably be more, because site plan review is going to think about sightlines and that sort of thing when you're doing your site plan review process. It's maybe more appropriate at that point anyway to kind of see what the facade of the building looks like in context. So my request would be, I don't want to say, you know, no, we refuse to provide useful information, because it's not the kind of, you know, attitude we want to take with the board, we want to be as helpful and cooperative as we can. But I'm curious whether the board would consider saying, you know, for a special permit, you've met the burden for proving that this is going to, you know, be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the bylaw, et cetera, that standard we talked about last meeting, and knowing that we're coming back for site plan review and can provide you this additional information there, would it be really helpful to help the Coviellos and the Costellos understand which direction this is going?
Site plan review is, I mean, if they meet all the required, there's no, there's no real assessment in the site plan review, is there, other than did they meet the requirements of sitting on the lot? Right? I mean, not the way a special permit allows for conditioning. Isn't that true?
So I can read you, your site plan review goes through vehicular, pedestrian access and egress, parking and loading, drainage, landscaping, lighting, neighborhood character, signage, hazardous materials, water and wastewater systems, and site slash project-specific criteria.
So neighborhood characters.
Yeah, so I think, again, I'm not trying to be, I think you've gotten everybody at this apple, you know.
Interesting.
I think it's accurate that a lot of those site characteristics are captured in site plan review, because a special permit that's in front of us is specific to the use.
Right, okay.
But that's not to say that we can't condition a special permit to, as the attorney suggested, require, or the site plan review. Require the site plan review to meet these certain criteria, not criteria, or just to be able to review those at that time. So the special permit would be contingent on, or the special permit would require that the site plan review meet certain criteria, or be able to confirm certain criteria. And Val, do you have any? Are you, are you still on, Val? And I don't know if you have any thoughts that you want to share with the board on this.
So the big difference in site plan review and the special permit is, site plan review, you look at those criteria, but you don't essentially have the ability to deny a project under site plan review. I agree that a condition in the special permit that says that they must satisfy the requirements to have adequate access or pedestrian and vehicular circulation must be met during the site plan review process, or this project is, you know, this permit will be rendered null and void, or language along those lines is helpful.
So does that seem reasonable to you guys? I mean, what Val's saying is to put-
Conditions in for it. So this vote, if we agree, we're saying that they have the authority now for the special permit, and then if we don't condition any of these things, then we can't deny it. I mean, we've lost our right to deny, but if we condition these specific things, then it has to be done in the site review plan and/or it's nullified, right?
And I can work with Val and town council to frame that language in the-
But usually, in a special permit process, why wouldn't you have these upfront? Like, why are we being, I understand that the developer wants to continue, but it's our job to sort of get the information as well before we go forward. And I don't like sort of being pushed in that direction because of the convenience for the developer when we're asking for certain things as a planning board before we grant that. That's my problem.
So I think it's reasonable to ask for, and for the developer to provide, the example of dropping, especially considering that you're thinking that it will help, and the public has requested it from more than one direction, taking the building and dropping it into a Google Earth for a relationship to scale is not a huge ask, and the developer agreed to that as well. It is reasonable to ask for more information from the engineer of which, how they came up with the trip generation. Usually, there's an international, it's called ITE standards, and they're the standards everyone uses for traffic trip generation at sites. And it's a standard practice in, for example, single-family home is 10 trips per day. Why 10 trips? That includes the post office and the Amazon trucks and everything else. So it's quite possible that the traffic information you're getting does include that, but the developer doesn't have his traffic engineer here to clarify that for you this evening.
He does.
So there are some additional pieces of information that you're seeking that are reasonable to ask for.
So the traffic engineer is here? The traffic engineer is here?
Okay.
Hi, I'm Tom Sacks, I'm an engineer with Hancock Associates. I'm not necessarily a traffic engineer, I'm the site civil. And we did take the ITE data. So what we did was, we pulled the ITE codes.
What is ITE?
It's, the ITE manual basically just gives set traffic rates to different, like-
I'm sorry, what does ITE stand for?
I don't know off the top of my head.
International Traffic Engineers?
I assume so.
That's a good guess.
It's like the standard code, it's ninth or 11th edition at this point, that all engineers go to, to determine the trip traffic. And it's based on studies and information throughout.
Exactly. And that's what we have here on this table, is we do have the ITE codes for each of the applications. So what we did was, we broke it up between existing and proposed condition. So obviously, they don't have one for antique store, but we did furniture store, so you can look up that ITE code, you get your trips per day, and that's how we calculated it. It's basically a handbook way of doing a traffic study, if you don't have the time for it, but it is something you can do down the road.
Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Thank you.
Thank you. And is this the latest edition you're using?
No, so, I don't know, I think this was ninth edition, it had a little dust on it. But typically, over the years, what they do is they up their values or they add certain uses. So I assume for this application, it's relatively close. I don't see any of the daily trips changing by more than, you know, a couple trips, like maximum. Whereas this is kind of a smaller application, where we're not using a superstore, which you're looking at 30-plus trips per day, like, that's something that, this is a little bit more smaller of an application, I think we can get away with the older data.
Val, do you see that we need more traffic information?
Well, this is a major public numbered street. Am I correct, a state numbered road?
It's Route 133, it's Main Street through Essex, and when they renovated it, I remember a traffic count of 75,000 vehicles a day, and that was in 2000.
So significant, the impact of 3D versus 6 at this location is probably not that significant. And I also think that when you're looking at what they call peak trip time, like, that would be morning commute, evening commute, you still have a very small number of units that you're talking about here. And you wouldn't probably find much of an impact at peak demand periods. So this is a reasonable assessment, I think, of what the traffic trips would look like for the proposed development.
So, so Val, does it make sense that the special permit have a condition to sort of develop the study that they've prepared now, just to flush it out a little better and provide more context and description around it as part of the site plan review process, such that if we put a condition in the special permit regarding what we expect to see fulfilled in the site plan review process, that this same approach, but with more detailed description and background to provide context and understanding what is and is not included in the process, would that be reasonable?
Yes, and I think I would recommend that you include line of sight, you know, just, you know that the typical traveled speed is going to be a certain speed, and then you need enough room to see. Like, for example, I've looked at some plans where the grading and the placement of a mailbox would actually impact the ability to see. So you want to have the sightlines looked at as part of the entrance and exits for the development as well. So maybe there's a tree branch, maybe, you know, that's something that's worth looking at as part of the conditions.
So is that information that we would require at the site plan review time, or is that information that we would require for the special permit? Do we need it now, or is it sufficient to require it in the special permit as part of the site plan review?
I think site plan review is going to be adequate in this case because of the busyness of the road that we're talking about.
Planning board members, do you have thoughts or concerns? What would you like to see?
I just want to comment that the gentleman said he was a civil engineer, he's not a traffic engineer. And I just would really like an expert to do it, this significant, just a proper study done by someone, not just out of a handbook and just, here are the numbers, like, take in all the factors.
Okay, so you're looking for a traffic impact assessment memorandum as a condition of site plan approval?
As part of the site plan review or as part of the special permit?
Special permit, right?
We're talking about adding three apartments worth of traffic to a road that carries 75,000 vehicles a day. So if we're going to ask for additional study, then that's sort of, are you talking about having the applicant do this, or have a consultant do it?
It is part of the site plan review, so I'm not clear how it, why we wouldn't push that to that, to the site plan review.
Well, that's, I think what Val said is it's appropriate to put it in the site plan review.
Yeah, that's what I'm just expressing, that I agree with Valerie. Yeah, that's what I'm just expressing, that I agree with Valerie, that I don't necessarily see why we would need it prior to that. You know, like, it would be a natural thing to submit during the site plan review, and it's not necessarily something you would submit for this process. And just sort of for the record, a civil engineer would also, could also be a traffic engineer. I mean, would likely be a civil engineer that is a traffic engineer.
Well, that would give you something where you could bring in a peer reviewer to make sure that you had a, you know, worthwhile traffic information at the time that you do the site plan review as well.
I know that you're saying, Lisa, it's an additional three units, but it's in the specific site of a major intersection with an island and with two houses that have five cars that are going to have, who have used this easement. The mailman has used the easement, I watched it, and how the other people on Burnham Court use it. So it's gonna, everything's going to be reconfigured, but it's, I understand it's additional three units, but it happens to be in the specific place of a major intersection of our little town. That's where I'm coming from.
So you're going to look at a traffic impact and access memorandum that includes maneuvers within the site as well as external to the site?
The question is, when, right?
Yeah. For example, we were working on tenants in a building here in a shared plaza, and when the second tenant came, it happened to be a Dunkin' Donuts, and we had a daycare already located at the site. So by doing a more detailed traffic impact and internal circulation study, what we were able to do was articulate where the parking had to be, and what hours, and sign the different parking spaces so that there wouldn't be a conflict between the daycare and the Dunkin' Donuts. And it's worth looking at sometimes to make sure that you do have an adequate setup inside and external to the project. And I think, given all the information that was just pointed out, that it's probably worth doing at the time of the site plan review. I think it would be in the best interest of the applicant to do it sooner rather than later, before they do all their full engineering, so that there's a good understanding of what might need to happen in terms of the architectural impacts, if any.
Okay, Val, so you're saying that the special permit should have a condition requiring the site plan review to fulfill those requirements? Is that, is that characterized this?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm having more-
I'm repeating myself too much, I think.
Hmm? All right.
It's your computer.
Yeah, I know, but we don't have anything on the screen to share, anyway. Okay, so I think, does that seem reasonable to Planning Board members as far as what Val has said, as far as a requirement in the site plan, in the special permit requiring the traffic assessment as part of the site plan review? And I will work with Val to try and to characterize that in the next draft.
And beyond just the review, I hope that it'd be a more robust site plan, showing the neighbors and current traffic patterns for them, so they're not backing out as some of the letters have suggested, that have been provided to us.
Right, and I understand that, and some of this, we just have to tread lightly around that because we have no jurisdiction over easements.
Easements, but-
Right. So I just want to be careful about what we do and do not require regarding easements.
Right. Even with the sake of just being a good neighbor, and having access and that sort of thing, which we've seen before on other projects that have come before us.
Right, and we can, what I did have in the draft special permit that we can talk about, if we're not going to get there tonight, but that the applicant shall work, and this was, I put in the special permit as a condition, the applicant shall work with the butters as necessary to ensure that existing easements and/or deed restrictions are honored, and that all access arrangements between the butters are formalized and memorialized prior to filing for a building permit, although any input regarding these arrangements is beyond the scope of the planning board's authority.
What number is that?
Hmm? That's on the fourth page of the draft. That's condition three on page four of the draft that you have.
But I don't think, even now, they've reached out to the butters. I don't think that has happened. I'm not sure, from what I've heard, it hasn't happened. And if it's not in our scope, I don't know why we're putting it, but I'm just saying it hasn't, I don't think it's happened.
This, as a condition here, was to say that when they come for a building permit, we want to know that all the easement information is ironed out. And how they do that is, it's a private civil matter that we have no jurisdiction over, but the condition here says that that needs to be addressed before the building permit, which is pretty much as far as we can go with easements. Val, does that make sense? Val? Sorry, your sound's not on.
Yeah, I think that it does make sense. You're trying to show that there's sensitivity and awareness of the context, and it does make sense.
So what we're also talking about, too, was just to have more of, sort of, a visual rendering of the neighborhood area, and that's a request. And that can be part of site plan review as well. We've had a separate request come in from a member of the public that addresses that as well, as far as having a sort of a visual, looking up and down the street with this information. So that will be something that we'll need to see a site plan review, and we'll make that clear in the special permit about the scope of the site plan review. So I think we'll include, we can include that there as well. Anyway, so, any other questions for the applicant? Because we need to continue with the public hearing part of the process and open up to public questions. So applicant representatives, we're going to open it up to public questions now, if that works for you?
Uh, excuse me, yeah, would you like me to stand up here, so I can answer in time, or am I sit down?
Yeah, you can stay right there. You just have to share the microphone with whoever comes up. So right now, we'll take questions, we'll start with questions. So we want to have questions before we have comments. Questions from members of the public in the room?
I'm just going to make a really quick comment before the questions. Susan Covielo, 6 Burnham Court, owner of 44 Main Street with my husband Bob Covielo. I just want to let my friends and neighbors in the room know that, yes, we want to, we need to sell the building, we want to sell the building, but Mr. Vavazza doesn't speak for us. When he represented us, he said we thought something, and we don't, I don't want him to speak for me whether or not we do. So I just wanted to clarify that, that we do want the sale of the property to go forward. And Bob sends his regrets that he cannot be here tonight.
He's online.
Hi, honey, he's in the hospital.
Ohm.
Hi, Bob.
All right, I see him online here. He's muted. Questions? Go ahead, please. Name and address, and your question.
Karen Bradford, 22 Main Street. I have many questions, but I think they're probably due at the site review. For instance, who's going to do the outside and inside maintenance of the building, about trash, about outside lights, so that we're not all flooded and they have the good downlights? I'm assuming those are things that'll be in the site review, not now?
Yes, lighting, landscaping, all those sort of things are topics for site plan review.
Okay.
The special permit focuses exclusively on use, and it's only to allow six residential units as opposed to three residential units. And a lot of the characteristics about the outside of the building and the maintenance and just the general feel at the street level are topics for site plan review.
Okay, okay. And the runoff?
That's all handled. They need to meet all the stormwater requirements of the Board of Public Works, so that's all handled by the civil design.
Okay.
And that's something, that's also, so those sort of site characteristics are also reviewed in the site plan review process.
Okay, great. I'll be back then.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Tony Bibelacqua, 40 Main Street. This is a question for the planning board. My understanding was, in order for them to be granted the special permit, they need to prove the case that this does not negatively impact the character of the neighborhood or have any adverse effects on the neighborhood in general. Is that correct?
That is a criteria of the site plan review. It's obviously subjective, but yes, that's-
Is that a criteria of the special permit?
No, I, yes, yeah, it is a criteria of the special permit.
Okay, so I don't think that they're doing either of those things, and I would ask you very seriously, please do not rush this through to the site plan review. There's a lot of unanswered questions, there's a lot of concerns, this is going to have a major impact on this small neighborhood. Please do not rush this through to the next step, just because he's asking you to. One specific question I have is, if you could tell us what the gross square footage of the entire footprint of this building is, like, the entire footprint of the structure? I mean, please don't say you don't know.
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
No, may be right here.
It is in our special permit. It is in our special permit, the impact.
The plate with the, so the second and third floor have three units each, and they, the second and third floor represent the biggest portion of the building because a lot of the parking, the first one's very small, right?
I'm talking about the entire structure.
Yeah, yeah, right, right. If you're looking from the sky, like, the roof, right? So we've got two units that are 1602, so that's 3204, and another 1660 is 4864. So 4864.
That's not how that works. You're talking about the living, the livable space, the usable living space of the condo.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So there may be some, you're right, so again, I certainly can get you that answer, if it's, it's got to be in here in one of these plans. I'm sorry, I don't have it off the top of my head, it has a lot of data in these plans. We can keep searching through it, but as, actually, maybe in our application, because we had to verify that we were not over the lot coverage maximum, and we're not over that.
That information was on the plans for the previous application, and now it's not on these plans for some reason.
Well, I find that hard to believe, but-
And the total, total area that includes the storage building?
How long is the storage building?
While they're finding that, do you have other questions? So we can keep, you need to go to the microphone, I'm sorry.
This is regarding the deed restriction I asked about last time, putting a restriction on further development of the back half of the lot, not just subdividing, but actually specific to further development.
So Essex, our bylaw only allows one principal structure on a lot that's up to 70,000 square feet. And so, by the bylaw, there could only be one principal structure on this property, and this would be it. You need, you need, it's like an acre and three quarters to be able to put a second principal structure. So they would not have the ability to put another building outside of an accessory building on the property. But that is, that's a consideration we're going to be making in the, when we talk about conditioning the special permit, is looking at the existing building and the existing accessory building and understanding what kind of limitations we can put around that. So there won't be a second principal structure, because that's just not allowed under Essex zoning bylaw. They've also maxed out the sewage capacity on this property, although that's not necessarily cast in stone, because that's something that could change in the future. But we are going to be talking about limitations on accessory buildings. And perhaps it's just the footprint that exists is that what they have is a vested right, but we haven't had that conversation yet, but I understand the concern.
The last question I have right now is relative to the traffic study. And this, this I feel is important to not just kicking this off to the site plan review. This needs to be dealt with before the special permit is granted. We're not just talking about traffic on Main Street, this is going to be traffic on Burnham Court as well. It's a very small street, it's only about 15 feet wide. It's a dead-end road, so it's going to be a major change for that road as well, not just Main Street. Is that something you can consider as part of the traffic study as well, not just the Main Street impact?
Yes, yeah, we can include, because there is additional traffic to Burnham Court, so that can be included as part of the traffic analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from public?
Hi, Jennifer Randaza, 48 Main Street.
Just stay close enough to the microphone, please. Thank you.
I apologize, I'm terrible at public speaking. You know I'm very passionate, because I'm willing to stand up here in front of people right now.
Is this, we're still doing questions, right?
Yes.
Okay, so-
So my concern, the question, is I want to know property lines. We have the concern with Choate Courts, which is in my deed. It appears that all of Choate Court is part of my property, and the Roy's have easement through it. The diagrams I'm seeing show that they are planning on using part of our entryway, and so I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about where the boundary is, that, as in their diagram, as far as where they have the islands, because from what I understand, that island's had a fence put up years ago, and it's kind of like in the middle of Choate Court, so that's not actually where the boundary's supposed to be. I've reached out to a number of surveyors, and unfortunately, the only one that responded to me was Hancock, who said that they would talk to me the next day, and they want to know the questions via email, which I submitted. And they said that they had to talk to the buyers, and they would get back to me. And apparently, they don't want to release the information still. So my question is, how can you approve of this, when we do not even know firm boundary lines at this point?
I will check with town council.
I can respond to that.
Okay, yeah, if you have an answer to that, it'd be helpful.
All the plans you have before you are surveyed plans, the boundary lines are clearly delineated. If there's any confusion on Ms. Randaza's part, I'm sorry, I didn't have to talk to her afterward, but the information before you clearly delineates the outline of the property. There's no question as to where the boundaries of the property in question are. Everything you have has been accurately surveyed by registered surveyors.
Is there a reason why they were not staked?
There was no requirement to stake the lot lines.
Okay, and then, the butters have not received any- And then, the abutters have not received any information from the potential buyers. I know that they're saying that they've reached out, but I know for a fact that no one has reached out to me and the neighbors that I have talked to, they have not reached out to. Is there a reason why we're not being transparent and being given all the information ahead of time? Like, if there's nothing to hide, then why is, what's the game here?
There's not a game, there's not a legal requirement for them to do that. If they do it, it's a goodwill gesture, but there's not a legal requirement. I mean, you received notification as an abutter about the public hearing that's taking place now, but if they're working within their property line... And again, this, and I will run this past council because we obviously want to stay on the right side of the law here, but we've also been told that the planning board doesn't have jurisdiction over lot lines and easements, and we don't have authority to make decisions on any of that or rulings or anything like that. It is way beyond our scope.
So even if we were to know that they are building on someone else's property, you could not prevent that?
So, are you able to, I mean, are you, this is a question for the speaker. Are you questioning the survey?
I am.
So you have the right to, and I know you said no other surveyors got back to you, but you do have the right to have another surveyor look at it and have the two surveyors compare. It doesn't mean that just because one surveyor did it, that that's it and that's a permanent line. There is an obligation to entertain a dispute and see if you can sort that out. So I don't know if the developer's willing to assist with that?
Absolutely not. Again, Ms. Randaza being unable to read this plan does not mean there's an actual dispute as to the surveyed lines. Again, and just for the record, I went and just checked to make sure I wasn't making this up. Her ex-husband reached out, on her behalf, in March via text. He and I went back and forth discussing the project between March 19th and March 22nd, at which time he asked if my client was going to purchase her house, and that's kind of where the conversation trailed off. So as far as neighborhood outreach, although not required, Ms. Randaza actually had her ex-husband reach out via text to me, and we conversed about the project at her request. So of all the abutters to complain about not receiving any notice or information, she's had a direct line since March to me, and whenever he's reached out, I've responded. But as to the survey thing, there's nothing in the record that would suggest there's an error with the surveyed plans, the plans are inaccurate, and I could see if she had submitted, you know, prior to this hearing, a conflicting surveyed plan, then you might have something where you'd have the grounds to suggest this process be held up while she gets a sonar survey. But at this point, you know, there's a reason that surveyors are registered or licensed have stamps. When they put that stamp on that plan and they put their signature on that plan, you know, you're expected to rely on that as something that's accurately been put together. They're not just going to willy-nilly stamp plans for the sake of the Costello's six-unit building, you know?
So I agree that there's stamped plans and that if there is a dispute, there has to be another surveyor that would be looking at the disputed bound. So if there isn't another surveyor or if there isn't an actual dispute over the line, then we don't have anything to entertain as a planning board. I was just trying to gauge where the developers stood, and I think we have an answer there. So unless there is a surveyed difference by a licensed surveyor, the planning board is obligated to honor the stamp and seal of the surveyor that prepared the plans and has, is required under the law to follow all the legal requirements of finding and locating the lines.
Thank you. I'm sorry?
I guess I have no further, I'll build this context, I'm sharing myself. Thank you.
Are there other questions in the room?
Madeline Emmons, Tensogenes Road. I also own the property at 47 Main Street, directly across the street from 44. I just want to clarify that Main Street or Route 133 is classified as a two-way, two-lane urban minor arterial road. It is not recognized as a state highway. It is numbered, but it is not recognized as a state highway. And DOT has the average daily traffic count, the last one they did was in 217, I believe that's when we did the second bridge project, and the traffic count then was 20,000-plus vehicles per day, and approximately 12% of those were trucks. So that's 2,500 or trucks per day. And Route 133 is not under the federalized control, but does fall under the protocol to protect both the cyclists and the pedestrians, as well as manage traffic and mandated to allow safe passage for all. I also just wanted to mention that because the intersection is the busiest intersection in Essex, it's a two-lane road, there's a blind corner, cars and trucks and bicycles accelerate around that corner at 30 miles an hour. I want you to think about that. People coming out of that little driveway, the first person to get T-boned is going to be a very sad day. And I feel that the planning board has the power to create zoning and to manage zoning. It also, with that power, has the obligation to protect you all, me, my tenants, and our neighbors. And I ask you to think about that. We need a traffic study.
So there wasn't quite a question, but just to, I don't know whether her numbers are correct, but just a quick math. Even if 20,000 trips per day is the traffic on 133, the additional 30 trips we're proposing would be 0.15% of that number she gave. So less than a fifth of a percent increase if her number that she gave was correct. If the chair's number that she gave is correct, it's 0.04%. Either way, it's minute impact.
I could be misremembering the numbers from years ago when they did the road upgrade, but that's a number obviously we can verify, so we'll look into that on our end as well. Any other questions from people in the room or online? Do we have any questions online?
We have one in the chat.
Okay. One more, we have one more.
Sorry about that. Tom Lang, 18 Eastern Avenue. I just wanted to know if there was an answer to Mr. Bevelacqua's question about the overall footage of the footprint of the building. Did you come up with a number? Please, thanks.
Sorry, I gotta do some quick math. So the, so on the, on our site plan, we show a total lot coverage for structures. In the proposed condition, we have 8,180 square feet. That's just also including the storage area in the back. All right. So, okay, so with balconies. So that will give us 5,977 square feet without balconies, and then with balconies, it'll be 6,487 square feet.
That's the proposed building?
Yes.
Or is that including the storage?
That's the footprint.
Hmm?
That's the footprint.
That's the footprint, or it's all the levels?
So if you were looking at an aerial of the building, the second floor, third floor, they have balconies, that's the area that you're looking at.
And what's the total gross square footage of the project then?
Yeah, then.
The bylaw is concerned with the coverage number, which is the number we gave. I don't think we have that.
No, I know, but I'm also concerned about the, just going back to the commercial space, right? It's 950 or it's 30% of the GSF. So it'd be helpful to have the GSF number because it's whichever's larger, just as a reference.
Sure. So I guess my question for the planning board, and it's okay if you don't have that answer, determining that, right, so you want just the gross square footage of the two full plates? But again, I'm curious whether like, you know, are balconies, is this interior finished space, do balcony, like what's the number you want us to give you so we don't give you the wrong number?
It sounds to me like he just wants to know what the footprint square footage is, including the parking, you know, so...
Do you have a definition?
Yeah.
It's 30% of the gross building floor area excluding enclosed parking or loading areas and enclosed mechanical rooms is the definition that's in the bylaw.
So essentially, all the weather tight areas, right? So ground floor, first floor, second floor, third floor.
Okay, so the floor plate at the top level without the balconies is three, it's roughly 6,000 square feet, so two floors of that, 12,000 square feet for the two floors, and then another 1,200 square foot of enclosed finished space at the bottom.
So that's 13,200 roughly.
200, that's enclosed finished space. The balconies are not included in that number.
That's more, that's less than what they have.
And so you go back to the question of the larger criteria, 30% would lead us to a commercial requirement of just about 4,000 square feet, 3960 based on that number. In order to do that, it basically obliterates the parking, shoves it all out, either into an open-air parking, which then has to be further constrained, hit those 30 feet from the road setbacks, or has to push down as the previous iteration, as you recall, the previous iteration was going to dig down to kind of deal with this, right? And that was not met with a lot of welcome for the idea of trying to solve the problem that way. So it's either, if we were forced to somehow generate 4,000 square feet on the first level, we're either pushing toward the wetland, we're either creating an open-air parking lot. And then, mind you, it's a, gosh, it's kind of like a circular thing. If we go up to 4,000 square feet, we're probably going to add another 20 parking spaces of required space for all that additional commercial space, right? So now we're adding another 20 spaces, we've got to fit somewhere on the site. The dozen or so we had under the building get scooped out from under the building and put further on the site. I think, you know, if these other concerns we're hearing about, whether these six units plus a small commercial and the amount of parking we have is, you know, too much for the site despite the bylaws to the contrary, adding another 3,000-plus square feet of commercial on top of what's being proposed is really going to kind of push this project back toward the original iteration that again was not, you know, a fan favorite of the town at the time.
Well, I think it's something we need to consider because one of our fears, or one of my fears personally, would be, you know, the component of commercial is really essential to mixed use, especially in this part of downtown. And what I'm seeing here, and I understand you're looking for relief, but 600 square feet of commercial, I'm just afraid that's like a token space that's going to end up turning into a broom closet or a storage area for, you know, shovels and really never really intended to be a viable commercial space. You're just kind of, it's almost sacrificial. You know, we've seen this before in other where, you know, a quote-unquote "commercial space" was never really intended at that because it's never given a fair chance. So it's just something I think we need to consider carefully and make sure that the vibrancy of downtown is maintained and not sacrificed, just so we can get a couple extra units.
So I guess just my concern along those lines, I do take that point because I appreciate this is mixed use and is intended to have, you know, an actual mixed use component to it. But again, it seems to be, and that's one of the things that happens with a multi-member board, and I appreciate you all have your own, you know, personal priorities, but on the one hand, we're getting feedback tonight about the concern over 30 trips a day and whether how robust an impact that's going to have on traffic. And then if we go, okay, you know, should there be, again, 3,900 square feet of commercial space?
10,000 square feet, so I think it's...
Right, so it's...
950. So it's 11 trips per thousand.
11 trips per thousand, so that'd be another, it would more than double the traffic that we're talking about that already has, despite what we believe to be a very reasonable amount of trips, has already raised eyebrows with both board members and the neighbors, you know, again, it's a push-pull.
I'm not, we're not saying exactly what that right number is right now. I'm not saying the maximum's the maximum, maybe in terms of traffic impact, that would certainly not be a great thing. But I'm just saying, what you're proposing now seems more of a token commercial allocation that I wonder if is actually viable as commercial. That's all.
I understand, thank you.
I would like to continue on with public comment now, just so...
We have questions online.
Okay, we have questions online. Edmund, go back to that part of the process. So questions online?
We have Erin Kirchner.
Hi, Erin Kirchner.
She wants to unmute.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. All right, I'm just wondering if the plans are available electronically?
I'm sorry?
Other plans available electronically?
The 11 by 17 set of renderings that includes the building plan, building plans, perspective drawings and elevation, so there's a set of drawings, so those are available electronically. And they, those were shared with us. The client has submitted the civil plans in paper version, and those are available both in the planning board office by appointment and at the town clerk's office, 7:30 to 3:30, Monday through Thursday, for viewing. So those are the hard copies of the civil plans that show existing conditions and then also how the site would be developed with the new building and the existing storage building remaining at the back of the site. Any other online questions?
Yep, we have Wes Burnham.
Go ahead. Wes?
Yeah, I'm working on it. I'm not doing too well in your chat thing.
You're doing great, Wes.
Actually, I don't have a question, if you want me to. Mine's more of a comment. I can hold off if you want.
I'm sorry?
He said it's more of a comment, he can hold off if you want. I don't see anyone else in the chat, so if you want to transition to comment.
Yeah, we can transition to comments, except I was, had said that I was going to take comments in the room first.
I'm okay with that, I'll step down.
Thank you, sorry. So comments in the room if we're done with questions?
Tony Bevelacqua, 40 Main Street. I have something I want to read, but before I do that, I just want to say, that was pretty shameful, the way you just tried to embarrass Jennifer by pulling up your text messages. The point remains...
Point of order, are we going to have him testify to the project or lecture me about interpersonality?
I'm sorry, I can't...
It just shows a complete disdain.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I can't hear if you're not speaking into the microphone, so...
I'll let it go, you know what you did, and it just wasn't cool. That's it. Okay. So I want to reiterate my concerns about the scale of the proposed project. After the town meeting voted no on the water and sewer access, they reduced the size of the building by eliminating the back portion that would extend down Burnham Court. But what will be visible from Main Street and have an effect on the downtown area will be virtually the same. I believe this, you know, goes back to the point of this having a negative impact on the character of the town, on the neighborhood itself. Again, we addressed this earlier, but the plans as submitted don't show any context for the scale of the proposed project. Again, I'm asking the planning board to pause on making a vote until images have been provided that accurately show the building to scale with the surrounding properties. Since the town meeting, the developer has been aware that the town does not want to see an enormous structure on the site. see an enormous structure on the site, and it sort of seemed like he's counting on us all not accurately being able to gauge what's being proposed. My hope is that we can have some clarity on this before a vote is held and not after the permit has been granted and it's too late. Another thing relating to scale, I know I've been bringing up the brewery a lot as a point of comparison, and I'm just doing that to try to communicate scale, I don't have a problem with the brewery. So we just found out that the gross square footage of the footprint of this building is going to be rounding down roughly about 6,400 square feet, including the balconies. And I did, you know, just because some people were laughing at me and wanted to dismiss last time when I brought up the brewery, I called the architects of the brewery to see how large that building is, and the footprint of that building is about 6,700 square feet. So barely larger than what's being proposed here. And the reason I'm mentioning this all, again, is we voted against the giant structure in the downtown area at town meeting. A structure that size right in the historic downtown area sandwiched between multiple small historic buildings, it doesn't belong there. It's going to be a permanent blight on the downtown area, it's going to forever change the character of downtown if this thing goes through. Following that, without the special permit for the three additional units, the applicant would still be entitled to develop a mixed use building with three living units, something that would fit much more comfortably on this small lot. Why are three units not enough? Why does every square inch of this lot need to be squeezed for maximum profit? This isn't for the benefit of the neighborhood. You know, three units are still going to be bringing new housing to Essex, which would be great. Currently, there's no one living on that lot, so the three units, it's great. You know, the extra three units he's asking for are not going to make or break the economic situation of our town or lower all our tax bills. There's really no upside to the town in granting the permit for these additional units. There's, it's, there's really just downsides. The only one that truly stands to benefit from adding these extra three units is the developer, more profit. There are downsides for the town and the neighbors. If this special permit is granted and the project is allowed to be built, it will permanently change our historic downtown area and will set a precedent for other large future developments to further erode what makes our town unique. Those of us who are in close proximity are going to see our quality of life diminished both during the lengthy construction and demolition phase and after it's built. Realistically, nobody in town would want to live directly next to this project. I would ask the planning board to consider these adverse effects as a disqualifying factor for granting the special permit. We have built our lives here and love calling Essex our home, just like many of our neighbors, and this project could potentially put our ability to continue comfortably living here into question. To sum up, town residents overwhelmingly voted no on the initial proposal, not just for the water access, but because there is no appetite in Essex for a large scale development directly in the downtown area. If we were to hold another vote today on whether this permit should be granted just based on the currently proposed scale, I firmly believe residents would overwhelmingly vote no again. Unfortunately, we as residents no longer have a voice in this matter. At this stage, the only people that still have an actual say are members of the planning board. We implore you to consider the immediate and lasting effect that this project would have on the quality of life of its neighbors and the historic nature of our small town. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from residents in the room this evening?
Madam Chairman, this is a question, I guess it's a point of inquiry, a point of information. When Erin Kirchner asked about this being an electronic file that she could have access, haven't we, haven't our boards gone far beyond the time when everything should be accessible to the public in electronic format? I don't understand why, you know, people have to go to the planning board office to look at something like this that may be important to some people, you know, that, you know, don't have access to get into, you know, the planning board office.
I understand. It's something we're going to be working on. We have a set of regulations right now, and they don't require electronic applications for something like this. Building permits are now online, but we haven't yet had an opportunity to migrate the special permit application process to the online portal. We're working on it, but we're not there yet, so we're still trying to catch up with things. So we can't ask for more than our regulations require at this time, and that's where we are.
Well, does the public have access to these drawings online with, if they write, or are they on some file that they can go on to? Or are you saying that just, so what we're looking at here, we're not, the public doesn't have access to be able to look at what I'm seeing right here now that's on electronic file?
Correct, because they've been submitted in paper form.
But they have it in electronic file?
Correct.
But you won't ask for it? I'm just, I'm just saying, again, I mean.
No, I agree, I think.
We dealt with this, you know, with electoral issues, I did specifically, I went all the way to SCOTUS where I was, you know, challenged, and we had to get a Supreme Court decision on electronic public information back in 2011. So I mean, I don't understand why we're still, we have electronic, but they're giving it to you in paper, and even our own board member, Erin Kirchner, wants to get this and she has to actually physically go into your office. And I'm not talking specifically about just this project, I'm talking about any contentious project that people might want to get access to.
I agree, and we are, we are working to correct that situation, we just haven't gotten there yet. We finally got online building permitting two years ago, and this just hasn't caught up yet. We don't get a whole lot of special permit applications, and we just haven't had the opportunity to catch it up yet. And I, I don't know what else to say.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, it's something we would love to have, and we just haven't had the opportunity. We're a volunteer board, and we're smocked with the work that's in front of us, bylaw updates, and we just haven't time.
No, I'm not looking for more work for your department, I'm just saying that we all know that any sort of engineer, anybody that's doing a project like this would certainly have it online and on file electronically for the public to be able to access.
So, right, but to do something like this, we need to have a procedure and a protocol, and we need to put it in our regulations, and we're going to be working to do that. We can't just arbitrarily, you know, some projects require it, some projects don't. We have to have a standard that we can apply to everyone. When someone applies for a building permit, they have to fire, file everything electronically online. And so anyone can go look at that online with access to the building permit portal, which any resident can establish. We just have not migrated the special permit process to the online portal yet because it's a different procedure, and we have to set up the whole programming to accept it in a different format. But then we would have it, and we're going to be working on it.
I appreciate it, your answer, thank you.
Other public comment? Online, Mr. Burnham?
Good afternoon, thank you. I got two points I want to bring up. First off, I'm confused where you guys left the square footage of the building. The only thing you should be looking at is the footprint that's actually on the ground. The bylaws only look at lot coverage, building coverage.
On the ground, right.
At the footprint, not each floor, it's not cumulative. So I think the 6,000 plus number they were throwing around a little bit ago is out of whack, but I don't have the plans in front of me either, so.
That's because we don't have them electronically.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that as a dig, that's a reality. The other thing I just wanted to remind everybody of, that when we put this bylaw in place for the downtown district, the whole point of this was to be able to utilize the downtown area better, increase the density, so we didn't have to try to continue expanding the total property and available taxable property out into the woods, that every time we tried to do that anyway, it was getting taken off the books and given to a non-profit. But I just wanted to remind everybody, the whole idea was to be able to increase the density reasonably. This particular project, when it came in with 16, I think was a little bit on the high side, I didn't expect that to go through in any way, shape or form of any way. Haven't been in your seat for a while. It's not unusual to come in high and then we negotiate down. But the current proposition, the common plan in front, I think is more than reasonable, especially with what we had in mind when we were building that, the downtown district bylaws. I guess I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, that's helpful input from the person who worked on the original downtown district. Any other comment from people in the room? Online?
I don't have anything else.
Hey, guys, Sean Costello. Obviously, I think everybody knows who I am. I've been a resident of Essex now for, I don't know, about 25 years. I've done dozens of projects in town locally, donated my time, resources, spent a lot of money here, love it here, raise our family. I voted against the brewery, by the way. I had a completely different idea for that project, which we couldn't do because of the current zoning at that time. I was really excited about a project, we couldn't do it. The brewery is now there. My point is that the project that we've designed, I feel, is in character with the town. I feel like it's something that we took a lot of effort to look architecturally significant and match the period style homes that are in Essex. And another developer that's going to come in and build something on that lot by right, per se, is not going to think like that. That's not going to happen. They can put something there that, they don't care, they're not going to drive by it every day. I am. And so we worked hard to make sure that, I think, that this building is as pleasing and safe. For instance, in my talking with Bill Samborn, we said, look, it's very important that we pull that building back from both Burnham and Main Street, so the sightlines pulling out both from Burnham and coming up Main Street are improved. Right now, the current building sits on the sidewalk, right? So your sightlines from pulling the building back are vastly improved. So we've gone through a lot of considerations when going through this project. It hasn't just been, oh, we're going to build a massive building here. So that's my two cents, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Other public comment? Did you have?
I was just hoping to respond to one comment that was made, it was made last meeting and it was made this meeting. I just wanted to, for context, again, there's been, talk about the size of this. And the two points I want to make is, one, again, I didn't know the brewery was even bigger than this, but again, the brewery is here and then becomes a comparable nearby property, which is bigger than this. But just using the town records really briefly, the building at 66 Main, one of the buildings at 66 Main, which is the direct elevator to the rear, 4,900 square feet. At 52 Main Street, you're at 4,700 square feet, and at 39 Main Street, you're at 5,410. So I think there's, I think it's the first congregational church in the, maybe the Baptist, but, so there are very large buildings, four of them right there within a stone's throw, the brewery, the boatyard behind, and these two large churches where you have footprints in the same ballpark as what's being proposed. So to the degree that you're looking to go, is this in keeping with the neighborhood character? Well, yeah, this will be, you know, building five of this size, there's already four that you can see from this lot. But the second point I want to make, this idea that it's, you know, it's big, or we need to see it in context, is that you are bound by the bylaw that's been passed and the maximums and the minimums that have been passed. And so even if I produce for you an in-context street view that shows the building as proposed, superimposed to scale, and if you personally have, that you go, that's way too big, well, that is a subjective reaction, but the reality is, as a planning board, there's no legal pathway for you to say it is too big, because your bylaws define numerically what is not too big, and it's by, again, height, setbacks, coverage, and this meets all of those. So whether or not a visual representation makes you understand it better, I get that, and I'm happy to kind of work, and so I was hoping to move forward with this, but I don't want to give the false impression that, you know, if it looks a certain way, that it then enables a special permit granting authority to request it to be smaller or pushed further away, because again, we're not asking for relief from setbacks, we're asking for relief from height, we're not asking for relief from lot coverage, we're meeting all those. The town has already decided independently that a building this size, this tall, and located in this part of this lot is appropriate for the downtown zoning district. And you guys just did that like three or four years ago when this district came in. So again, I'm not trying to be combative, and I have no issue, you know, if we have to, bringing forward stuff, I just want to make sure that this idea of, are we trying to find out if it's too big or not? Well, no, numerically, it's not too big. We've proven that, you know, kind of empirically. And so it's more about, as I think you mentioned, just like, it's context, visual understanding of it. And so I want to make sure that I've got that on the record now, so that there isn't some misunderstanding next time, of saying, oh, yeah, I think it looks too big. Well, it's, you know, you said it's not, right? You told us what the guidelines were, we played by the guidelines. This is the building that results from the guidelines, if not a bigger one as was the previous iteration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Not so fast, planning board members, we have minutes.
I have a report.
So as far as 44 Main Street goes, we've closed the public hearing. The planning board will be reviewing a draft special permit at our next meeting, and that's our next steps. Thank you, everyone, for attending, we're just going to be reviewing minutes, and Teresa has some information to share with the board.
Let me do that first?
Yeah.
I am going to run downstairs.
Yeah. Go ahead, yeah. All right, just a couple of quick things. First of all, it was the end of the fiscal year, and so I'm officially reporting to you that your planning board budgets came in under budget, we did not overspend, but I got within like $4 on our technology budget, and I think I actually got within like $40-something cents of our materials budget, so, or expenses budget. So that was pretty darn close, but importantly, just.
Positive or negative side?
I'm positive, we good. But importantly, on the off chance that I get hit by a bus or something, or, you understand. The, sorry, I'm distracted. Could we ask you to take your conversations outside? Thank you. Lisa's not here to smash the gavel. The employee, the hourly, the rate, the clerical position, excuse me, that budget also came in under, and I intentionally leave a good buffer in case something happens, and then you need to bring a new person on and retrain them and that sort of thing. But the goal is always to kind of space it out throughout the year. So anyway, it's good news, that's all good, but I just wanted you to know if you see in the budget reports or whatever, well, why did we have all of this? That's why, it's intentional. And then the other thing is that I was finally able to finish, we did not have a Word document available of the subdivision rules and regulations. So when we voted in April to make that edit, had to bring that all into a Word document. So that is finally complete, and I had Ariel sign tonight the clerk attestation that that change was made after a duly posted public hearing, and so now I can send that all into the two groups that need it, the land court and the registry of deeds. And then the other thing I just wanted to bring up, two quick things just to be thinking on, I know it's late. Just as a heads up, late-breaking emails and that sort of thing, people get excited about a thing right before the meeting happens, and I do my best to get them to you, but there is a chance that something might come in, you know, in the hours before and not get to you until after. And then also what has happened, what we learned this week was some emails had gone to Lisa but not to the planning board email, and it wasn't CC'd and she didn't realize that. So I'm constantly updating those folders so that you have access to all the resident input as much as, as quickly as possible. But if you see some, if you know someone sent something in and it seems missing, feel free to let me know. So there you go. And then I am, I do apologize about the mistake on the date on the. So, there you go. And then, I am, I do apologize about the mistake on the date, on the agenda, but I do make mistakes, but I don't usually make the same one twice. And then, the final thing is I just want it on the record, because it kind of keeps coming up, and Lisa will, we've talked about this as well. The, we're getting a lot of requests for, oh, good, I'd like her here for this part. I'm getting email requests pretty regularly to send out meeting materials to members of the public, and my practice is that I don't do that. So, even if we had something available electronically, that's not what we do for something that is before the board currently. All of the things that come in go, get attached to the minutes. Once they're approved, then that goes out to the public, but they are public documents. So, if you know of someone that's interested in doing that, it's a public records request. It's not something that if people just email us, if they want to make an appointment, anyone can come in and see things, they can see anything they want. But I don't give out copies, and I don't give out electronic versions of materials before the board at the time until they're with official meeting, excuse me, official minutes.
Do you have a FOIA form online for people?
That's all through the town clerk. So, anytime someone does, let them know that that's the town clerk that they have to go through for that.
But I think there's actually, isn't there a link on our page too for that, that takes you to the town?
Yes, that takes you to the town clerk.
Right, but it's on planning board pages, the link that takes you to?
Yep, on the planning board page.
Takes you to the FOIA request?
Not a, it's public records request to the, through the town clerk's office, yep, because it goes through the town clerk.
The link on our page takes you to the town clerk's page, where you make the requests.
So, I just wanted you to know what the process is there, because people, people want access to this stuff. The OSRD is a unique circumstance where we're putting everything front and center and online, but that's not what we do standard.
And that's because we have to change the regulation?
Yeah, there's a, there's a-
Yeah, we have to talk about it because it's complicated, because right now, building permits are filed online, and that material, anyone can create an account on the permitting software, and you don't access all the permanent information, but any person with an, who's sort of registered with online software can go type in an address, and they can see the documents that have been filed with that. They can't see the interaction between the discussions that go on in line, because that permitting portal is used as a means for, you know, the DPW and the building inspector and the fire chief to communicate about the approval process, but anyone can go in and look at the documents. Ideally, and so, anything that comes before us that's, you know, not a special permit, and when we do a site plan review or something like that, all that material is on the permitting portal. What's not on the permitting portal yet is stuff like a special permit, because the permitting portal hasn't, the software hasn't been updated or rewritten or reorganized, so that that would also be a online filing, which-
Because there's no permit number, basically. Basically, right.
It's not, it's not a billing permit, so it's something that can be done, because I know Erin and the Board of Health has worked with Jeff to update theirs so that food permits can be filed online. So, it's just something we need to adopt in our regulations and do it, so.
And it is, oh, sorry, correct.
I was just curious. Could an applicant voluntarily post, give stuff to us to post online? If they wanted to be, if they wanted to be more transparent, they could say, "Here's the site plan. Feel free to post it to your, to your website."
Right, and we could-
Well, I think there's a couple, so there's a couple of things we could do even short of getting fully into the online portal, which we can do. The cost isn't going to be a problem. I talked to Brendan about that, because this can fall within the building part of it. It's just a time issue. But what we could do in the meantime is change the rules and regulations pretty quickly and easy, easily, to require electronic-
Submission.
Files to be submitted to us. And then, yes, they could offer to do that, but that would be something that would be-
Voluntary.
Voluntary, yeah. But we also could, we, meaning you, also could potentially, this is a legal question, could you have it be part of the rules and regulations that something that requires a public hearing, we're allowed to put those things online, because it does seem reasonable to give better access? And the reason, the reason right now that we don't just put all of that, part of the reason we don't put all of that out is that there's an equity issue. Because you're not required to send us electronic files, then some projects get put online and some projects don't. But once that's the case, if you choose to say you have to submit electronic files, and for things with public hearings, we're going to post it online, then it is equitable. People can get it in person or online.
And we have a whole updated regulation to look at.
I know.
When we get through this, I know, but, yeah.
Yeah, but I just wanted everyone to be aware-
But I'll make sure that there's some language in there to cover that possibility. I might have done that already. I don't know. I might have done that already. I don't know. I don't remember.
That's all I have.
Motion to approve the minutes?
We have two sets of minutes. So, which one are you moving to approve?
June 18th.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve June 4th?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
From the 4th?
Yep. Thank you.
Anything else?
adjourned?
Yeah, I just, I want to make a comment. You said for our next meeting, we're going, you're going to start drafting a special permit for 44 Main. How are you going to draft that when you haven't met the minimum requirement of commercial space? In the special permit, it clearly says the impact of the neighborhood, and I just really feel the traffic study needs to be done, the visual needs to be done. I, I just want to cover every aspect. I don't want to be another, "Why didn't the planning board do their due diligence and compare this to the brewery?" This is within our rights of a special permit to ask for these things, and I just feel like they have to, why are we having mixed use if they're going to give us 600 feet? I mean, we need to hold that accountable. Why have a bylaw if we're not meeting a minimum? So, it sets a precedent.
It's, so, the visual is something that will help people visualize it, but it's not something that we can use.
I understand, but it, well, it-
But I do think they could provide us a written, you know, outline of the square footage, you know, requirements being met or not met, and how, you know, right now, you know, they're adding them up in space and-
Solar refresh.
Yeah, that's, that's not. We need facts.
I agree.
Particularly for that.
So, I don't feel like-
There's corridors and stairs and elevators, and there's a lot more than just the units added up.
Yeah, I mean, I just feel like, I'm not moving, I am not comfortable going to a draft. I think we need to explicitly say, "This needs to be done." We're not going forward with a special permit unless this is done and of showing us these things. It's not, this is our job.
So, the visual has no bearing on our decision. It cannot have a bearing on our decision.
Why are you fighting a rendering to help, like?
I'm not fighting a rendering. I'm saying it can't be a condition of the special permit. We can't use a rendering as any kind of an evaluation metric in the special permit.
It's for public consumption as well.
As what?
At, for pub, for the public to see this, for them to see this, right? And to, I think Simone said it could make the case for it coming. Like, there just needs, I understand the visual rendering is not a legal document, but it is helpful information.
Well, I would say we're not using it to sort of qualify height, dimensions, massing, right? Because that's, if they're working within their envelope, then there's nothing we can do there, but I think we can. The same reason why we ask for elevations, right? And plans is to understand context, size, scale, character. I think whether it's three units or six units, it would be a visible difference, right? It's can be different. The windows will be different, the balconies, the quantity of balconies will be different. The density will be felt, whether there are three big units or six smaller units, you're going to notice a difference driving by. So, I think we can use it as a tool to evaluate the impact on the neighborhood in terms of character and things like that, but I think as long as-
It's only three units.
Right.
Maybe it's two units that it's given, like-
And they're asking for this relief, right? It's shocking to me that they're so like-
That's what I find bothersome. They're asking for relief on two separate issues, yet they're being contentious, and they're not, the first thing you should be doing-
Relief on what two issues?
They're asking, well, the three additional units and the commercial.
Yep, exactly.
It's two, and, I mean, public interaction 101 is like, you talk to the neighbors, and you at least try to get some consensus. Maybe it's not always the case. Maybe you don't get every neighbor, but that's just the way they came about it. I don't know. I didn't, I didn't appreciate it at all. Tell us what, you know, what we can do, what we can't do.
So unprofessional and contentious.
Presentation was unprofessional, the-
They didn't have-
Jump match, you know, like, it didn't have very-
Numbers.
Much looks like what the neighbors are afraid of, that somehow they're just going to add on to this thing and go right back to what they wanted in the first place.
But they can't-
Something they're asking for, I know-
But they can't, they can't do that.
Until they change, until they go to town meeting, ask for more or something. I don't know. I don't blame the neighbors for being nervous about this, just because of their lack of transparency and stuff. I know that's not, not what we're voting on, but it just didn't, I didn't feel good about it.
Yeah, it's a good world.
Yeah, I mean, they're coming to us for relief.
But I do think, I do think they should be required to provide us the square footage document. I mean, that's part, they're asking for relief on square footage, and we don't have the square footage numbers, which I didn't quite realize, so.
Right, that's pretty surprising.
You know, six, they're asking for relief from what? We don't know.
Right, so the real number is probably, because if, to Wes's point, right, we're only including the footprint as the GFA.
So, it's around 1,200.
So, it's probably 2,000 square feet that they would be required, right? 30%?
They need to redesign it. They need to show this.
That's going to affect your parking.
Exactly, yeah. And I'm not saying the maximum is the answer, but if he came and said, you know, "We'll give you 950," well, okay, to me, that, that's a step in the right, 600 is like-
Or we'll cover the frontage.
600, you know, is going to end up being just a room closet.
Yeah, but they have room. They are saving a house. It's, listen, the design does not really mean-
Oh, that's true. Yeah, you're right.
They've got room. They're just trying to like maximize, and we're like, "Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah." No, no, I'm sorry.
They have room where, where are you talking about?
Back.
Yeah, there's room. They want it this way, but it's not fitting, I mean, it's not bright. I think we have to, we have to do it the way it's written in the bylaw and not set precedents that we've always said before. Why did this happen? How did this get through?
Val, I don't know if you are there and you can speak to the work that you did to establish the numbers and, and, because what we have is, it's two criteria for square footage, one for square footage, one for frontage along Main Street, and then the third one was to allow deviation from those through the special permit process for situations where, for whatever reason, the requirements didn't seem appropriate. So, I don't know if you can provide any context around that, and, you know, what the basis was and, and, you know, what is, is normal in mixed use? And also, just advise the board some on next steps we should take on this.
So, I, the way we came up with the numbers was, I literally went through the assessor's records and looked at the building configurations and the square footage for, I think it was maybe a dozen buildings downtown that were, I asked Lisa to give me a list of strikingly different buildings, so I could try to get a sampling of what I could find, you know, and 600 square feet is the smallest commercial use in the downtown that we came up with, and 30% is pretty much the standard for what you're seeing in your existing downtown, so the idea-
Do you mean 950?
The 950, sorry, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
That's an important point. So, there isn't anything smaller than that that I'm aware of in your downtown district. And there isn't anything that doesn't have a 30% ratio in the downtown district that I'm aware of, because we tried to find a wide array of different types of buildings, sizes of buildings, all mixed use. So, those measurements depict what you already have, and that idea was that you would be trying to continue the character and feel of the mixed-use buildings in your downtown district. You don't have to grant all three additional units. You know, they're asking for three, but you can, you don't have to give them all three. Something else to think about.
How would you, how do you justify that, I guess? What's the?
What's the basis of that decision?
Well, I mean, you could, you could be looking at the 950 minimum or the percentage and saying that, you know, a building of similar size and scale could accommodate that much retail and still be a viable mixed-use building based on the criteria in the bylaw, and say it's five, for example. I mean, I can try and do some math, but I think that, I think that that's something that we could look at in terms of trying to come up with criteria for a decision at the next meeting relative to size. It's not saying that you're not giving them because of the size of the building, but you're saying the use within, which is the subject of the special permit.
I'd like to see even more, like, I would love to see a negotiation back and forth. I don't know if that, how feasible that is, but see more, but as far as this project goes, see more commercial space and maybe give them relief on a parking spot, something like that, like, or whatever. To, I mean, I think to lop off one residential unit is kind of like, well, that's not going to change anything except for traffic, right? It's going to be less cars coming and going. But if you added, if they met the commercial space requirement, then that's an add for the downtown district. If it's a true commercial space, and to Ariel's point, not a fortified room closet or a gallery that has no, you know, in or out, or whatever, you know.
Is it really even considered relief, though, if they're not meeting any of these criteria? That's what I'm-
The 950 or the?
Right. You're just, that's a variance, isn't it?
No, it's because it's, it's-
30% of the frontage.
They've more than exceeded 30%.
30% of the frontage. That's the, that's the workaround. It says no less than, so on any of these, it says be no less than 30% of the building frontage. So, that's the workaround.
So, they've met that, but they haven't met the square footage.
Okay. I mean, not that these plans are too far along, but they've got a lobby the size of a basketball court.
Yeah, for the residential, yeah.
Very easily grab 300 feet out of that lobby and meet.
Yeah.
But they probably didn't because they don't have the parking.
Right, the parking.
If they said, hey, you know, don't worry about the parking. I don't know. I don't know if that's-
Well, if we-
They have the green space. They have, they have room.
Lawn parking.
Well, they can go back with parking. There can be more parking behind.
Yeah.
Because the lobby is 545 square feet and-
It's huge.
It's the biggest commercial.
And what, what are they doing in there?
I'm sorry?
What are they doing in that lobby?
Did you guys all look at this?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, thanks.
All right. It's after 10 o'clock. I am out of steam.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. No, no updates, no committee updates, and you still have to ask for public comment.
Oh, public comment?
I do have an update.
What's that?
He has an update. I'd be not feel bad if I don't.
Can you save it till next?
Very quickly, do the survey for the home, you know, afford- Very quickly, do the survey for the home, you know, affordable housing, which is out, it, maybe it was July 2nd, but there's a survey that you have to do. The other thing is, is really important that a, a mate, to consider for us on a bylaw is, I went to Harbor Light presentation last week on affordable housing and how Ipswich really has gotten 9.3% of their affordable housing bar, because they have an inclusionary bylaw. And they've had it since the 1990s. And what they've said is, is that, you know, developers either give some units to affordable, for affordable housing or payment in lieu, and it goes directly to the affordable housing. And they have this huge amount of money budget that they do seed projects and they can work with, have money to work with other nonprofits like Harbor Light to, to, to meet their affordable housing requirement from the state. So, I just feel like this is something we really need to work on, or discuss, you know, of what we do this year. Inclusionary bylaw.
Oh, that doesn't, is there anything that we're affected by on this development with MBTA communities?
I have to look at that, I don't know yet, I-
Like, I mean, does it take away our choice on the count? Is basically my question.
For this property? I, I, I don't have an answer for that yet, I have to look at what they've provided, I just haven't had time to do that yet.
Motion to adjourn?
You just have to ask for public comment online.
Public comment online, is there any public comment?
Nobody in the chat.
Public comment?
I have a question.
You have to go to the microphone for that.
Okay, so are you, I just want to be clear, are you able-
Just for the record, can you please say your name and address?
Tony Bebelacqua, 40 Main Street. Just so I can have a better understanding of how you consider this, are you able to consider, like, the impact this will have on the neighboring, like specifically the, the really closely abutting property owners? You know, quality of life, for one thing, is that something that you can actually consider in granting yes or no?
Are you talking about the dimensions of the building?
No.
What, the impact as far as-
So this, this structure's gonna be going up only, you know, 15, 20 feet away from some of our houses. And yeah, it's a massive structure, but it's, it's gonna be a huge change to the quality of life that we all, you know, we've built lives in these homes not anticipating something like this coming in and turning everything upside down. It goes well beyond just the size of the building, you know, we're gonna have, for one thing, there's gonna be way less privacy. This, the 40-foot wall is gonna be completely blocking off the entire south side of our house. It's gonna be, you know, changing and limiting how Donna and Mike Roy and Jennifer and Naza access their own property through that driveway. There, there's a whole list of negative impacts this is gonna have beyond just the fact that it's not gonna look right downtown. I, I think those things are not being addressed adequately by the applicant or his attorney. And they're just kind of being brushed off and saying, we, we checked all the boxes, we're allowed to do this, you can't say no.
We can't say no if they are, I mean, we can't say no for dimensional reasons. If they meet our setbacks and they meet our height requirement, our attorney has told us we can't deny a project on that basis. We can't say-
I, I understand, I understand what you're saying about the dimensions, I'm not talking about the dimensions anymore. I'm, I'm specifically saying, this is gonna like drastically alter the lives, specifically of these three homes that closely abut the property, and I feel like that's being completely glossed over and just ignored. Where it says right, right in the criteria for, for getting the special approval, special permit granted is, is that there can't be any adverse effects to the neighborhood.
So you're saying the proposed use does not adversely affect the neighborhood?
Yeah.
But this is, they're talking about the use. That, the proposed use, the proposed use is not the building. So the proposed use is, if, if they were putting a strip club there, we would say, yes, that use affects the neighborhood. So, use is different than the physical structure. Use is-
So use-
So, so this is residence and an office space. And we can't say that residences and office space are going to adversely affect the neighborhood.
So use currently-
I'm sorry?
The use currently is, there's just that antique store there.
Correct.
There aren't, there aren't, there isn't a 12-bedroom condo building. So that's, it's dramatically changing the use.
It, it's hard, it's hard to say that residential use is, can affect the neighborhood. It's, that, I-
At that density, it absolutely will. I mean, if he was just, like I said earlier, if he was to build this thing with the three units, he's granted by right. There, there's no issue there. But he's, he's, you know, inflating, like, like Shelley said, he's, he's trying to cram this thing into half of this parcel where he's got all this extra space that he doesn't want to touch, and we don't know why he doesn't want to touch it right now.
I will discuss this with Val and Town Council. I don't know, Val, if you have any insight into, to that, how density is interpreted as use. So where three residences wouldn't be harmful, but six residences would be?
I think it's important to have that conversation with Town Council because it does go to the question of the, of the density and whether or not that's, you know, the special permit is up to six. So, it's a legal question.
Okay, I will take that up with her.
Thank you for hearing my question.
Any other questions? Motion to adjourn? Second? Do you guys all want a second? Second was unanimous. All those in favor?